Good evening, Farmington Hills. And welcome to our September 8, 2025 City Council meeting. I am calling our meeting to order. Our meetings always begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And since we have a proclamation about the arts, the cultural arts this evening, I'm asking our Cultural Arts Commission to lead us, come on up en masse and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. And roll call, please. Councilmembers Aldred.
Here.
Boloware.
Here.
Bridges.
Here.
Bruce.
Here.
Dwyer.
Here.
Noel.
Here.
And Mayor Rich.
Here.
Item two, proclamation honoring the 25th anniversary of the Farmington Hills Special Services Department Cultural Arts Division. And it will be read by our council liaison to the Arts Commission, Councilmember Boloware.
Thank you, Mayor Rich. You know, I love this commission. They represent the soul of our city. There's just, there's just so much that they do, and I'm sure you're going to hear a little bit more about it later. But this is honoring the 25th anniversary of the Farmington Hills Special Services Department Cultural Arts Division, September 2025. Whereas the city of Farmington Hills has one of the nation's largest municipal cultural arts division, which has played a vital role in shaping a vibrant community through award-winning programs. And whereas the Cultural Arts Division began in 2000, building on decades of community commitment to the arts through the Farmington Area Council and Farmington Area Arts Commission. And whereas the Cultural Arts Division has offered high-quality programs, including classes, concerts, exhibits, summer camps, youth theater productions, festivals, and public art program, and more, engaging participants of all ages, interests, abilities, and background. And whereas signature events such as Art on the Grand and the Free Summer Concert Series have attracted tens of thousands of visitors annually, fostering cultural enrichment and civic pride. And whereas the Cultural Arts Division partnership with esteemed institutions, including the Detroit Symphony Orchestra and Detroit Institute of Arts, strengthening its impact on the community and region. And whereas in venues like the Hawk Theater and the Hawk Maker Space, the Cultural Arts Division has provided platforms for local artists, performers, and creators to connect with the community. And whereas the city will celebrate the division's 25th anniversary at the Farmington Area Arts Award at 6:30 PM on Saturday, October 4, at the Hawk, an event that is free and open to all. Now therefore, Teresa Rich, Mayor of the City of Farmington Hills, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby recognize all former and current staff at the Cultural Arts Division and thank the community members who have participated in the city's art programs. As we acknowledge the 25th anniversary of the Cultural Arts Division, we encourage community members to find an arts opportunity to take part in. Accepting this award will be Rachel Timlin. Rachel. Do you have anything to say first, Rachel? Or you, she wants a, just a photo opportunity?
Photo first, and then, and then you speak? Okay, absent, sure. Come on up. You're welcome. Thanks for being here.
I'll have to go back a little.
Okay. So the clock is center. Yep. Hang on, Gina, are you good?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I just have a few remarks. To my right here, I've got the great Nancy Commandorius. Many of you remember her as our first cultural arts supervisor. She's going to say a few things after me. So thank you, Mayor Rich, council members, city staff, administration. I'm Rachel Timlin. I've worked for the City of Farmington Hills Special Services Department for 20 years now. Eleven of those years, I've had the honor of working as the division head for the Cultural Arts Division. And as many as you know, I followed the incredible Nancy Commandorius, who was the city's first cultural arts division head, started in 2000 and retired in 2014. I keep dragging her back to everything. She can't get out of it. She thought she retired, she can't get out of it. Thank you for this proclamation honoring the 25th anniversary of the Cultural Arts Division and for allowing me to take a few minutes to respond. In Farmington Hills, arts and cultural programming are considered essential services. Americans for the Arts recently released findings from a study that confirm what we in Farmington Hills have known to be true for years. Here are some key points from that study. Engaging in the arts makes us feel creative and inspired, and for many, the arts help us cope in times of distress. The arts enhance creativity, contributing to job success and overall achievement in various endeavors. Arts and culture help unify communities by providing shared experiences among people of different races, ethnicities, ages, beliefs, and identities. And cities that support arts and cultural programs are viewed as more desirable places to visit, work, and live. We know this to be true in Farmington Hills because we have seen the impact time and time again. Over my 20 years with the division, I have personally interacted with thousands of people who have participated in our programs. I've seen countless individuals walk out of our concerts with tears in their eyes and smiles on their faces. I've heard directly from teenagers who said they felt hopeless and alone before discovering a sense of belonging and authenticity in our theater programs. I've witnessed young artists exhibiting their artwork for the first time through our programming, going on to thrive in successful arts careers. I've heard numerous stories of gratitude from parents whose children thrived in our classes and camps. One story that sticks out, a couple years ago, I spoke to a young couple who were moving to Michigan and were deciding between Ann Arbor and Farmington Hills. They told me that they ultimately chose Farmington Hills after attending a free monthly dance and art event for toddlers at the Hawk called Rock Round the Hawk. That experience sold them on our city. They remarked that a city dedicated to creating opportunities like this for its youngest residents was a city they wanted to call home. I have 20 years' worth of stories like this, and if you multiply my stories by the number of stories and experiences of the dedicated staff, teachers, and volunteers on our team, well, you can imagine the impact. We could write several books, I'm sure. We probably will. What we are doing in Farmington Hills is truly special. We have the largest and most comprehensive municipal cultural arts division in the state of Michigan and one of the largest in the entire nation. What we have been doing for 25 years is what other cities are only now beginning to pursue. We have set the example and are leading the way, and this is something to be proud of, for sure. So I want to invite everyone to celebrate this milestone with us at our Farmington Area Arts Awards on October 4 at the Hawk Theater. There you will hear more stories, particularly the story of how the Farmington area community members advocated for dedicated arts and culture programs dating all the way back to the 1960s, before Farmington Hills was even considered a city. You will learn how that momentum grew over the decades, resulting in the current Cultural Arts Division, which offers programs that continue to expand and meet the needs of our community. This division is supported by dedicated employees who work hard to ensure its sustainability through ever-growing program revenues and successful partnerships. So thank you again to our City Council and administration for recognizing that the arts are a cornerstone of our community and for attending or volunteering at many of our programs over the years. I know we have several former arts commissioners and commission liaison, Boloware, Bruce, and Mayor Rich have all been active on our commission. Thank you. To our current arts commissions, actually both past and present, thank you for your commitment and service to the arts in Farmington, Farmington Hills. To our incredible Cultural Arts Division employees, past, present, and future, the true heroes of our story, thank you for your fearless dedication and passion. We would not be here today without your commitment and hard work, that is for sure. And you've all seen our staff and commissioners, so I won't ask them to stand again unless they'd like to and get a little round of applause for all of their work. And finally, I will turn it over to Nancy Commandorius, who started this division back in 2000 with just one employee herself, and built it into what we have today. And none of us would be here without her, her hard work all those years ago. Nancy, your turn.
Good evening, everyone. It's really a pleasure to be back here again at the City Council. It's an honor for this wonderful proclamation, and I can't believe it's 25 years. That's just as incredible. When we started the Cultural Arts Division, the city had received a message directly from the community via questionnaire sent to all the residents. There was an overwhelming desire, excuse me, for more art experiences, and I was impressed by that. And that's one of the reasons I wanted to come here to Farmington Hills, that the community wanted the arts so strongly. During my initial interview with Dave Boyer, he was the Special Services Director at the time, he asked what type of things I thought we could have here. And I responded with, and this is a true story, I want to make this the biggest, best cultural arts division in the state. And he laughed. And he laughed because, of course, there was nothing here. There were no places for art classes, there were no places for, to hang art. And to give you an idea of where we were at the time, I can remember painting of four-foot-by-eight-foot, well, several four-foot-by-eight-foot plywood signs myself to advertise concerts and sticking them out in front of City Hall. That's the type of advertising we had. Throughout the years, we continuously struggled on how to handle our rapidly growing programs because the demand was so large, and we had to come up with creative solutions for art and performance spaces. I can remember when the Farmington Community Band was on the old Showmobile out at Heritage Park and looking at those performers in their folding chairs and the edge of their chairs being right on the edge of that Showmobile, and I was always afraid they were going to fall off, or that the Showmobile would fall apart. We were just bursting at the seams. If you can imagine putting 270 kids in two performances on the stage with no dressing rooms, no backstage, no space for sets, and a shared gym, it was pretty crazy. But with the support of the council, the commission, the citizens, businesses, volunteers especially, and with a lot of hard work and many, many dedicated people, the division's dreams have finally come true. In 2024 alone, cultural arts has had more than 4,000 children and adults in its visual performing arts and maker space camps, classes, and workshops. Rachel Timlin, I don't often get a chance to say these things, she was right here alongside me for many of those challenges. Seeing the division grow and thrive made it very difficult to leave, but having Rachel in place to carry on the vision helped make that decision easier. She is truly one in a million. That, she's that magic combination of creativity and common sense. With her amazing leadership and along with her talented team, the cultural facilities at the Hawk have developed into the stellar success it is today. For one thing, cultural arts finally has the theater we dreamed of, and she and her staff have utilized it to the maximum, filling it with such incredible number and variety of high-quality professional performances that over 20,000 people have attended concerts at the Hawk in the past year alone. These numbers are for 2024. They're growing even more in 2025. I hope the council will always trust Rachel's outstanding leadership in the arts and be proud of how the Cultural Arts Division is continuing to evolve and grow. This success story has proven how very much the citizens of Farmington and Farmington Hills want this as part of their lives. I often heard, and I still do, we wish we had this in the city. I heard that just two weeks ago in Waterford. They were talking about the Maker Space. They had no idea that I was connected at all with Farmington Hills. Farmington Hills is used as an example across the state, and so many cities envy what we have accomplished here and what you have accomplished as a City Council. I am so grateful to the Farmington Hills City Council for continuing to serve the community through the arts and for always advocating for the power and the value of the arts. Arts and recreation are an enrichment, they are life.
That was fabulous, and congratulations. And now to follow that, yikes. All righty, next up, announcements, presentations from city boards, commissions, and public officials. Anyone else in that category wish to address us this evening?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Can we get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Oh, yes, we, we could do that. So, back to item one. So excited about the arts. Approval of the regular session agenda, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Moved, is there support?
Support.
All righty, this is a regular vote. All those in favor, please, please, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, carries. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. Anyone have correspondence that they'd like to share? Yes, Mr. Aldred.
Just to reiterate, I think most of us have been receiving emails on the subject of the COSTIC Center and what the plans are for, for the COSTIC Activities Center and senior services. And I think it's probably just worth reiterating the fact, obviously, that's a topic of a lot of interest and high priority, and I think we have a meeting related to it on the 22nd of this month, so the next meeting at 3:00 in the afternoon, the study session. That's around the funding of the whole of the special services, as I understand it, but it will include that. So again, I know people are somewhat impatient for progress and information, but just to say that I think it's something that is certainly of continued high priority for this City Council, I just wanted to reiterate that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. That then takes us to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine, administrative, or non-controversial by the City Council and will be enacted pretty much by one motion unless they need to be separated because of attendance. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the items may be removed from the consent agenda for consideration, and they will be read by our mayor pro temp. Mr. Dwyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Number six, recommended approval of extension of agreement for resurfacing the Farmington Hills Golf Club cart path to BSI paving in the estimated amount not to exceed $275,000, CMR 9-25119. Number seven, recommend approval of purchase of John Deere Equipment Package for the Park and Golf Division, Deere and Company, in the amount of $168,619.12, CMR 925120. Number eight, recommend approval of agreement for payroll coordination function with Manor Costarian LLC in the amount not to exceed $50,000, CMR 925121. Number nine, recommend approval of purchase of one 10-yard and one 5-yard dump truck chassis to Wolverine Freightliner in the amount of $282,264, CMR 925122. Number 10, recommend approval of purchase of a sewer crawler camera and related accessories to McQueen Equipment in the amount of $109,671, CMR 925124. Number 12, recommend adoption of bylaws and rules of procedure for Innovation, Energy, and Environmental Sustainability Commission, CMR 925125. Number 13, recommend adoption of a policy to waive the collection of penalties for failure to file property transfer affidavits as allowed by MCL 211.27B, CMR 925126. Number 14, recommend approval of agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation for Maintenance and Operation of Gateway Sign M.D. Contract 25-5460, CM 925127. Number 15, recommend approval of City Council Study Session Minutes of August 11, 2025. Number 16, recommend approval of City Council Regular Session Minutes of August 11, 2025. Number 17, recommend approval of City Council Special Meeting Workshop Minutes of August 13, 2025. That completes the agenda.
Great, thank you.
And this, yeah, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, item six through 16, as read by the mayor pro temp.
Support.
We have a motion and support. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmembers Boloware?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dwyer?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Aldred?
Yes.
Mayor Rich?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. This then takes us to council member comments and announcements. Anyone have something they would like to share?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
Just a public note that I attended the OCC Board Meeting recently at the Auburn Hills Campus. They were discussing the partnership potential with Little Caesars, and as you know, that the project was moved forward. They signed a pre-development agreement. We're about 18 months away from seeing that become a reality, but the first step has been done, and clearly that would be a major benefit to our city from standpoint of being a destination community for ice hockey in Farmington Hills, and then also could impact other areas as well. So wanted to say that, that I had an opportunity to talk at the public meeting, not representing the entire council but myself, and it was approved, and I'm very happy to see that. So this could be great for our city going forward. Thank you.
All right, I just have a couple things to share. Walk the Hawk is tomorrow night, probably the last one outdoors for the season, and it is supposed to be gorgeous out, so come on out to the track tomorrow night at 7:00. As Mr. Aldred mentioned, there's been a lot of concern and questioning, and we've received numerous emails from folks with concern about what's going to go on with the COSTIC. And so I will be there tomorrow and Wednesday at lunchtime. If anybody wants to talk to me, I am happy to share. And that then takes us to the city manager update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, just one item, just wanted to let the community know that on 9/11 at 6:00 PM in downtown Farmington at the Riley Pavilion, we'll be celebrating, we'll be, we'll be having the Patriots Day in commemoration of the 9/11 attacks. Again, that's at 6:00 PM, starting at 6:00 PM at the Riley Pavilion in downtown Farmington. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That then takes us to item three, public hearing and consideration of introduction of an ordinance to amend the Farmington Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34, Zoning, Article 5.0, Site Standards, to add a new Section 34-5.20 Design Standards Zoning Text Amendments 5, 2024. Good evening.
Good evening. Charmaine Kettler-Schmaltz of the Planning and Community Development Office, here to introduce the zoning text amendment, item 5, 2024, which is our design standards. This is the first reading and public hearing for this item. It is a part of the comprehensive update to the zoning ordinance to move forward with meaningful implementation of our master plan for future land uses, vision for the city. The design standards are for non-residential uses, as is called out within the master plan, and the goal is to establish baseline for building quality and durability. We've got some things that were included in the updated text for you as a result of our conversations in August. So the two items that we had called out to us are added into the language. Those are highlighted in yellow for your convenience. We have a presentation from Giffords Webster this evening to summarize and illustrate the changes to the code, and then as this is a public hearing, there would need to be the opportunity for receiving of those comments from anyone present before council moves forward with any discussion or questions. So I'm going to turn that over to our consultant, Joe Tengary is here to do a presentation.
And as, as you do that, let me put out, since we do have the public hearing on this particular topic, anyone who wishes to speak on the topic of the design standards, please be sure to fill out a blue card, give it to the clerk, and make sure in subject you say "design standards," and we'll be sure to call you for that item.
Thank you. Yeah.
Good evening. Joe Tengary from Giffords Webster, City Planning Consultant. So as was introduced, we are talking about zoning, design standards that are being introduced into the zoning ordinance. So Farmington Hills has not historically had zoning standards governing the materials or appearance of non-residential buildings. Our master plan represented, recommended the adoption of some basic standards for building appearance that support durability without being architecturally prescriptive. So right now, we have a couple of sections of the ordinance with some standards, but they apply only to particular uses or overlay districts. We recently adopted some standards for gas stations, and then we have freeway overlays and the Grand River overlays. Those are form-based, they're pretty prescriptive, and they're voluntary as well. And then there's no general standards. So the amendments have a series of subsections involved with them. There is a purpose statement, why are we doing this, providing a basis for future interpretation that explains when and where those standards apply and when and where they don't. There are some allowances provided for existing development, and the aim is to promote entrepreneurship while improving the look and feel of the city and balancing costs versus aesthetic So we define a range of permitted principal building materials and a permit, permitted range of permitted accent materials. There's an emphasis on durability. Easily damaged materials are kept away from heavy traffic areas. It does prohibit some materials, and then there is some waiver and modification ability included in those standards as well. These are the principal materials, so you have brick and stone, fiber cement siding, decorative CMU block, CMU stands for concrete masonry unit, timber, dimensional wood, glass, and decorative masonry veneers. And then the other accent materials include plain or painted CMU block, glass block, polymer plastic, stucco metal, EPHIS, which is an external insulation finishing system, mirrored glass, and vinyl. There are some architectural scaling standards, so these are broad standards that attempt to avoid monolithic, featureless facades or monotonous repetition. They're provided as a menu so applicants can pick elements that work for their project. This is just an example image of how we try to break up a building so that it doesn't just look like a giant, you know, single shape.
that explains when and where those standards apply and when and where they don't. There are some allowances provided for existing development. And the aim is to promote entrepreneurship while improving the look and feel of the city and balancing costs versus aesthetic need. So we define a range of permitted principal building materials and a range of permitted accent materials. There's an emphasis on durability. Easily damaged materials are kept away from heavy traffic areas. It does prohibit some materials. And then there is some waiver and modification ability included in those standards as well. These are the principal materials. So you have brick and stone, fiber cement siding, decorative C M U block, C M U stands for concrete masonry unit, timber, dimensional wood, glass, and decorative masonry veneers. And then the other accent materials include plain or painted C M U block, glass block, polymer plastic, stucco metal, E F S, which is an external insulation finishing system, mirrored glass, and vinyl. There are some architectural scaling standards. These are broad standards that attempt to avoid monolithic featureless facades or monotonous repetition. They're provided as a menu so applicants can pick elements that work for their project. This is just an example image of how we try to break up a building so that it doesn't just look like a giant, you know, single shape. Some more examples of the kinds of elements that are called out in there. We have some standards pertaining to roofs, avoiding artificially tall buildings, permitting and setting back rooftop terraces as well. There are some standards around windows, fenestrations, just the fancy word for windows. So attempting to avoid blank facades and opaque boxes, there is some leeway for certain uses provided in there and some waiverability as well. Building entrances, trying to work with the architectural scaling standards, really intending to promote convenience and accessibility, highlight where the entrance is on a building, even if it's an unconventional design, promoting provision of amenities, and then some public entrances, just basically trying to call attention to them so that people aren't left searching for them. And that was it. That's the succinct summary of the design standards. If you have any questions about any of the specifics, we can certainly get into those.
Any questions from council before we open the public hearing? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well then, at this time, I will open the public hearing. Do we have any cards on this topic?
We do not.
We do not have any cards on this topic. Okay, going once for the public hearing, going twice. And I am now closing the public hearing. Council, what's your pleasure? Dr. Bruce?
I would move the introduction of an ordinance to amend the Farmington Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty-four zoning, Article five site standards, to add a new section thirty-four five point two zero, design standards, zoning text amendment five, two thousand and twenty-four, CMR nine twenty-five one one seven.
Thank you, we have a motion, is there support?
Support.
You have motion and support. Is there any discussion? Well, for the public's point of view, we have had conversation about this in a joint meeting with the Planning Commission, so this is not the first time we've seen this. Okay, then this is a roll call vote, please.
Yes. Council members Bruce?
Yes.
Dwyer?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Aldred?
Yes.
Bolaware?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Mayor Rich?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now moving on to new business. And item four is consideration of a request to reconsider council's motion to deny planned unit development two, two thousand and twenty-four, including site plan fifty-six dash eight dash two thousand and twenty-four, Mulberry Park and the Tabernacle multifamily housing located on Thirteen Mile Road west of Middle Belt Road. That's CMR nine dash twenty-five dash one eighteen. So this involves a request from the property owner and applicant to council, for council to reconsider its decision that was made at the August ninth, two thousand and twenty-five council meeting to deny the application for P U D plan approval. This is based on new and additional information provided by the applicant regarding the proposal. Procedurally, this is a first step for council to consider whether it is willing to reconsider the motion to deny what was approved at the prior meeting. Now, I understand that the applicant and possibly the owners would like the opportunity to address council regarding their requests, which will be allowed. At the same time, I will ask them to keep it short, please, as we have received and reviewed their detailed requests and information in support, and we are already very familiar with the project. I will then call on anyone who has submitted a blue slip about this item. So if anyone has not yet put in a blue slip to speak on this topic and would like to, now is your time. Okay. Good evening again, and we'll hear a minute from you or so, and then hear from applicant owner if they would like to speak.
I don't have a lot. I just wanted to call attention to the documents that were provided to you from my office, including the many, many minutes from previous meetings, including Planning Commission, documents that were provided from the applicant. And if you had any questions for me before we move forward with hearing from the applicant and public comments, I wanted to make myself available to you.
Okay, great, thank you. And then I want to also acknowledge we've received quite a bit of email correspondence. And so I've asked a couple of members of our council to please read the names of people we've received emails from on this topic, and if you could do that at this time, please.
I just first want to make a statement before I begin that. I just want to clarify remarks that I made last meeting in regard to the Mulberry Park Tabernacle project. When I stated that, quote, "I believe this is a scam and we are being played," unquote, I meant that I believed without what I felt was timely and complete information, which had been requested for many months. Council's vote would not have been based on full and accurate information, and in my opinion, council's vote would have been a sham or a scam on the voters as a result. In retrospect, I think the better term I should have used was sham. My statement about being played was in response to the information that I had requested in earlier meetings that had not been provided, whether it was intentional or unintentional. I don't know much about anything about the two property owners named in the agenda materials, but I want to be clear that my comments were not directed at them. Only my frustration with not being provided the information that I'd been seeking over several meetings, the absence of which I believe decreased council's ability to vote accurately on a very important matter. If there are anyone else construed my statements otherwise, hopefully this clears the air. Just to further clarify the issue, from the request for reconsideration that has been received, I believe that one of the property owners or proponents is or are affiliated with the Caldean Community Foundation. The Caldean Community Foundation does a great job providing services to improve the lives of many people in our community, including advocacy, acculturation, and cultural preservation. And as someone who works in the mental health field, I appreciate the work that they do. Also, just to make clear that this is about the proposed P U D only. I want to make sure that I recognize the Baptist Manor as well, which is a nonprofit, faith-based organization that has provided affordable, quality housing and personal care to our, personal care to our senior citizens for over seventy years, and I thank them as well for their service to our community. And with that, I'll read the names of the people not in favor in terms of emails or letters that we've received. Aubrey and Janice Lee, Eric Schmidt, Robbie Turner, Valerie Watson, Beverly Milhalco, Charlie and Kristy Luna, Guido and Eileen Campanet, Campana, Kate Johnson, Lindsay Matic, Courtney Agarusa, attorney representing Lindsay Matics, Roman Goldston, Roger Metz Hoots, Craig LaPointe, Ray Moran, and in favor is Vicky Barnett.
Okay, and after that list, and after that list was received, after, thank you for taking that out for everyone.
Sorry, I thought we all had each different ones.
Yep, it's all good. And also to acknowledge the video received from Mr. LaPointe. And then we, since that list was printed, we also received one on the against side from Ray Moran and one in favor from Nancy Jennings. Okay, now we are happy to hear from applicant or owners. Good evening, Mr. Schaefer.
All right, well, good evening, members of city council. My name's Aaron Schaefer, I'm with Schaefer Development. Just give me a moment to pull everything up. This evening, I am attended by the underlying landowners sitting behind me, as well as the folks of Baptist Manor. Dr. Bruce, I want to thank you for your sincere apology. I think it's more directed to the folks behind me, but that does mean a lot, everything that you had mentioned. All right, so as told by staff, I am going to do my best to keep this short and brief and not overwhelm you with any information you already know. What I really want to do is take some time to reflect. Where we were when this project was first brought to you in January versus the seventh time we're in front of you in September, and ultimately what this plan will look like and some of the positive benefits, which I think the neighbors and council will really appreciate, is part of revised submittal to be submitted at a date certain. So the presentation tonight is really broken into three parts. Our request for the P U D reconsideration and how we meet the precise spirit and intent, and the letter of the law of page fifty-two of the master plan, where that really provides the most clear definition on the corresponding densities to the flex residential district. We'll then move into item two, public benefit initiatives. Some of these may have been lost in translation when we first presented in January, and again in February, and March, and so on and so forth. So I really just want to put on the record all of the public benefit initiatives that are part of this project. Because in our team's three-year review of other comparable P U Ds in Farmington Hills, not one project that has been approved by the city council has had nearly as much level and detail of public benefit as we're presenting this evening. And finally, I want to divide the third section really in two parts. There were a handful of responses regarding health, safety, and public welfare objections that were noted at the August hearing. There are responses why these constitute a rationale for denial, and I'm here to prove otherwise and state how representations and letters made by your consultants, your staff, your outside consultants, as well as the unanimously approved development by the Planning Commission, refute some of those findings. And finally, I'm going to talk about the three specific objections made by Dr. Bruce and our responses to said objections, which I think will meet the satisfaction of the three items we're really trying to get for at the following hearing. So again, just want to make everything clear as day so that we can reflect what we presented in January, what we have this evening, and what we aim to present as part of a revised submittal. Not going to bore everyone with the details, but we're located on the south side of Thirteen Mile, just east of the existing Baptist Manor campus. To north, we've got the residents at Westgate. To the south, we've got the nine residents backing up to us at Holly Hill Farms. Executive summary, so we are here this evening seeking a request for reconsideration of the P U D to a date certain. And the revised submittal will feature the following three items in red. How we aim to be fully compliant with the letter of the law and the spirit and intent of page fifty-two of the master plan. Our efforts in reducing density. Following the August hearing, the landowners agreed to give us a price reduction, so we will be reducing some density as part of a revised plan. And finally, item three, multi-generational living with a focus on new senior housing, and how our solutions are in direct alignment with statements on elected officials' websites who are currently running for reelection. Request for P U D reconsideration, part one. So we propose the following modifications to align with the master plan. In front of you is page fifty-two of the master plan, which gives us guidance into the underlying density for flex residential. It says flex residential has the opportunity to be increased to R C one densities where one, a third or more of the site is preserved, and two, setbacks of a hundred feet or more preserved to adjacent neighborhoods. Had we known about this fact at the six other hearings that we had, this was never brought forth by staff, never brought forth by Planning Commission, never brought forth by your outside consultant, and it was ultimately brought forth by a council member at the August hearing. So we are proud to admit with a revised site plan submittal, we would meet the letter of the law of those two things. From an open space perspective, the plan that you last saw with sixty-three units showcased a total open space figure of fifty-one point three percent, or eighteen percent higher than the minimum requirements in the master plan. From a hundred-foot buffer, I think seeing is believing. So I'm going to show you the three modifications we can do to guarantee a consistent one-hundred-foot buffer to Holly Hill Farms. With the current plan in front of you, you can see that the setback at a minimum is seventy-three feet, and on a high end is eighty-four feet. By doing item one, removing the east-west sidewalks, and items two and three, reducing the rear yard setback for those internal units that are closer to Thirteen Mile Road, we can provide a consistent one-hundred-foot setback along the entire property line. However, I know certain council members, it's imperative and important to have sidewalks internal to a development. I live in a development that's thirty-five years old in the city of Farmington Hills that does not have sidewalks. But what we're looking to do as follows. Those two north-south roadways that run perpendicular with Thirteen Mile Road, that sidewalk will remain. We also have this nice interior courtyard in the middle of the development, which takes you to that really nice revised Thirteen Mile sidewalk. I can show that in further detail on some other slides. But again, this is what we're seeking to do in order to provide a consistent one-hundred-foot buffer along the property line. And as I've been told by Planning Commission and by staff, it is up to the discretion of city council to approve or waiver sidewalks. But this is our best faith effort in keeping a plan that preserves as large of a setback to those nine neighbors at Holly Hill Farms, which I think is more important than just the sidewalks for this development, because that's why we're here in front of a seventh meeting, because you guys have believed so. Our second item, reduction in density. Following the August hearing, the sellers have agreed to offer a price reduction in a good-faith effort to secure site plan approval at a date certain. Also, certain council members erred on the record that the individuals and the underlying landowners were considered bad community partners in keeping properties and blighted in bad state. But at the end of the day, the only way you can own up to that as a city is by the amount of violation and warning notices that were received. In March of two thousand and twenty-five, we received a violation notice to do, one, facade repairs, two, gutter repairs, and three, do some residential blake cleanup along the property, nothing major. Schaefer Development took this as something imperative to do, and we retained and paid a contractor to get all of this work done. So that is, you know, just this idea that these are bad landowners, they've kept the property in disheveled state, that is an inaccurate statement. Multi-generational living with a focus on new senior housing. Again, we're going to come forth with a revised site plan with reduced density, but I really want to show you what we have right now. The current plan, sixty-three units, almost two-thirds, sixty-two percent of the entire development is designed in mind for the senior demographic, featuring the Baptist Manor Ranch units and the ranch duplexes on the south side of Mulberry Park, in direct alignment with the priorities posted on certain elected officials' websites seeking reelection. We need more senior housing, we need more senior activities and amenities, well, let's bring more seniors in and help make that a reality. Now I'm moving into part two, public benefit initiatives. I wanted to remind everyone of all the public benefits, whether it be ones that are developer, voluntary offers, items that have been brought forth by city council from January to now, and even the residents here in the audience. We've listened to every single comment that has been made and take those comments to heart. Benefit number one, deep buffering. I think this has been asked and answered, but again, we can comply with the exact spirit and intent and the precise letter of the law by providing a consistent one-hundred-foot buffer along the entire southern property line. Benefit number two, traffic and access enhancements. Don't want to bore you with that's on the screen? I think seeing is believing. When you take a look at the traffic and access enhancements, you really kind of have to zoom out and take a step back, because, you know, we're working alongside Baptist Manor, we've got this intersection that goes into Baptist Manor, so let me kind of, you know, back things up and kind of give you a more holistic view. So as part of our development, that first duplex on the Baptist Manor campus will be removed to facilitate that connection to Thirteen and Detroit Baptist, but more importantly, that signalized intersection that exists. Baptist Manor has had an interest in removing the three duplexes south of the entrance to remove some of the oldest ranch duplexes on the entire campus. In August, we received P U D qualification from your Planning Commission for the sixplex unit on the very west side of the Baptist Manor campus. This will be built to house displaced residents as part of this development. Understand, if this Thirteen Mile planned unit development is not going to fruition, there's really not enough at stake for that property to undergo redevelopment. But understand, as part of this project, we really want to beautify the section of the Thirteen Mile corridor, specifically on the south side. Benefit number three, walkability enhancements. We are installing a landscaped sidewalk that currently replaces the unsafe walkway currently situated less than one foot from Thirteen Mile traffic. In regards to enhanced connectivity, I assume Mr. Bridges will like this, because on his website, he talks about the Orchard Lake Market Study. But the redesigned sidewalk provides safe, convenient pedestrian access to all the amenities Farmington Hills has to offer on Orchard Lake, whether it be shopping, dining, entertainment, lifestyle. This improvement aligns with the recommendations from Community Attributes. A township retained planning consultant, they were the ones that ran the Orchard Lake Market Study Visioning Session, in which we, Schaefer Development, voluntarily participated... in which we, Schaefer Development, voluntarily participated in at the request of the city manager's office. Alongside Schaefer Development and other developers, really, this was the major finding from the study. You want more people on Thirteen Mile Road? Bring some higher-density housing, some good walkability. Pieces like this, which conveniently sit on Thirteen Mile, straddled between Middle Belt and Orchard Lake, this is a prime candidate to help bring this visioning session to life. So I'd welcome more discussion on this during the Q and A session. Benefit number three, walkability. To the left, you can see the existing sidewalk, which is very dangerous, currently less than one foot from the right-of-way. To the right, you can see the revised site plan, where we're pulling it forty feet south, forty feet more internal to our development, and we'll have some beautiful landscaping, as well as our hallmark public art amenity, so people can really enjoy that as they traverse and walk down this side of Thirteen Mile Road. Public benefit number four. Don't want to talk about this too much, but we first came with you with seventy-six units. We're now down to sixty-three units, an eighteen percent reduction overall density. We've negotiated a price reduction with the landowner to further reduce density in a voluntary effort that showcases our unrelenting willingness to go back to the drawing board, oftentimes as many times as it takes to secure a site plan approval. Name me one other developer that's come in front of you seven times and wants to try to find the path of least resistance versus suing a community. That's not our intention. We, Schaefer Development, don't sue. I can't speak to what the landowners would do, but it's always our best effort to listen to all community stakeholders and do our part to create a development that everybody can at least approve of. I'm not going to necessarily be happy of, but be amicable of. That's always our goal as a development outfit. Benefit number five, visual impact. I know we talked about this, but it's more of a refresher to maybe some of the new faces here. All of the units that are now adjacent to Holly Hill Farms, those nine residences, all of the units now to the south will be single-story ranch structures, something that Ms. Knoll has mentioned numerous times. Ms. Bolware has mentioned, amongst others, and we've listened. The plan introduces single-story ranches along the entire southern property line, creating compatible transition to the residential to the south, complemented by an even larger one-hundred-foot setback and expanded tree preservation area. Upon confirmation with our civil engineer, the revised site plan will preserve significantly more trees than previously anticipated. This includes protection of several landmark trees that I know several neighbors have talked about, ensuring the site maintains as much of its natural character as possible while meeting project requirements. Public arts. Don't want to talk about this too much. Again, we've heard about it before. This was a voluntary developer benefit that is not outlined anywhere in the ordinance or master plan. We've got that nice meandering pathway in the middle that links up to that public art exhibit and really provides this nice opening to that new Thirteen Mile sidewalk, really creates an inviting entrance as you enter and exit the community. Screening and beautification, I'll show on the next slide. But what we're currently at, and this number's going to decrease, is we're currently forty-nine trees deficient that we can't physically plant on-site. And we've got two options. We can either do increased DBH trees along the southern property line and plant larger, hardier, more mature evergreens. Or item two, we could enhance the Baptist Manor frontage, which currently only has two trees on the property. I'd leave that to you guys on what you think is the most important. I think we've got quite a bit of trees south to Holly Hill Farms. I think with this one-hundred-foot buffer, it'll be even better. So I'd like to address that deficiency by really making Thirteen Mile pretty where it counts, where people, where the greater community is going to see the action versus the nine residents to the south, where we already have a ton of landscaping. Tree impact. The revised plan will feature a hundred-foot setback, reduce overall tree impact, and shrink that deficiency figure. Okay, seeing is believing. You can see here in yellow is where we're looking to do a three-foot-high knee wall to really help block that light and noise pollution internal to our development and Thirteen Mile. Highlighted in red, where we've got our curated public art exhibit and some nice native landscaping to really create a warm and inviting entrance for people on the sidewalk, making their way into the development. In green, you can see how we have this really nice meandering trailway with a nice bench amenity to the north that will have direct overview of that public art amenity. And finally, that area in blue in the southeast quadrant of the plan. You can see we have a secondary seating and open-air amenity, which will consist of pollinator gardens, native landscaping, things to attract, you know, wildlife and bees, so on and so forth. And finally, a nice seating amenity where residents can either enjoy the basin or that one-hundred-foot tree preservation area to the south. This is a representation. This red line notates the one-hundred-foot buffer. With, this is the plan you saw last time. So if we reduce the setbacks for the ranch units, the setbacks for the townhomes, adjust the sidewalks accordingly, that would be the very back limit of disturbance of the home elevation. So again, we're meeting the precise spirit and intent and the letter of the law of your unanimously approved master plan that each and every one of you voted to support in 2024. Benefit number seven, stormwater management. I think it's more important to direct this to the attention of the neighbors because I don't think it may have been best expressed by engineering and other staff at prior meetings. So from a stormwater management perspective, our development will feature an onsite detention basin, which is designed to handle two consecutive back-to-back one-hundred-year storm events as our rain events are getting worse and heavier in shorter times. So again, our basin is designed to handle two of these one-hundred-year back-to-back rain events, capturing nearly all of the current runoff, as well as post-development drainage impacting Holly Hill Farms. Note, this is a requirement by the Farmington Hills Engineering Department to adhere to Oakland County drainage standards. Oakland County will not approve a project if the drainage of a new development makes it worse than what it was before in its current state. So rest assured, whatever problems are out there, that these nine neighbors are experienced because we've had the chance to walk almost everyone's yard that has allowed us to, or walk the southern property line. We understand the issue and want to solve it. Exhibit C. This is the drainage of the property in its current state, which I've known, I've shown various council members in the past, but I'd appreciate if you take particular attention to this at this moment. You can see Exhibit C. This is how the site currently drains. The high point at the northwest corner and the low point at the southeast corner. The water naturally wants to go southeast, then make its way south, then go into these neighbors' rear yards and traverse further eastward to the Pebble Creek drain. This is the development post-construction. Keep in mind, this is not the newest site plan that shows the sidewalk changes and the revisions to the setback. So just for imaginary sake, pretend that is a consistent one-hundred-foot buffer to the south. Everything in white, everything you see north of those ranch units that back up to Holly Hill Farms is designed to be captured through our stormwater infrastructure, whether it's the beehives, whether it's the swales, whether it's the, you know, what's going on in the road. All of that water is making its way into the basin and eventually up to Thirteen Mile. The only water that residents will experience is that natural one-hundred-foot buffer. So look at this plan and look at that plan and tell me which one's having more water go into the neighbors to the south? Is it this plan or is it this plan? Again, we're not at the engineering plan stage yet or at the site plan stage. We still have to do detailed engineering plans. I'm more than happy to walk the site with neighbors. There are individuals that speak with me on a fairly frequent basis and others that don't. But should we seek reconsideration this evening, we remain steadfast in constantly engaging and informing the neighbors. We are not bad developers. We want to make sure that whatever we do withstands the test of time. For instance, a couple blocks to the north, our father did the Glen Oaks Townhouse development. It's been, what, almost forty years? Look at how pretty those trees are just to the south of Glen Oaks. You know, we pride ourselves in putting together developments that withstand the test of time. Benefit number eight, multi-generational living. I talked about this earlier, but again, two-thirds, almost sixty-two percent of the development is designed in mind for the senior demographic, people who want to age in place, who want to get out of the big four-bedroom house on a third-and-acre or a fourth-and-acre so they can move into this housing. And it provides younger families and people who want to build roots in the Farmington Hills community the ability to move up and grow. Because I can't tell you how many people who live in my subdivision, who are sixty and seventy and coming on eighty, and they're like, Aaron, I'd love to move to something smaller. I'd love to move to something lower maintenance. Heck, I'd even consider living in an apartment for the tax consequences because it's cheaper than a single-family house. And then it gives people like myself and my girlfriend, and eventually we'll get married and have children, but it gives us the opportunity to move into that housing that seniors are just sitting in. Because you know what? I can move into another single-family house that's less, pay more, have less square footage, and I'm paying more in taxes. So what's the point? I'd rather just stay here until, you know, I physically can't anymore. So I think we all need to take a step back and understand that these are issues that are impacting the greater world versus just the residents here in this room. We have a housing crisis. Specifically, where do seniors go? Well, unfortunately, our politicians made it easy where you were, you know, you become elderly and you're locked in your tax rate. You don't have to pay as much, and that's just unfortunately the world we live in. But something has to be done on the community level to ensure that we can break this cycle. So I encourage you to reconsider as a result of that. Moving into the health, safety, and public welfare objections. There were a few items that were stated at the August hearing that I want to politely refute. And you'll see that most of the items I have shared with you earlier today will help provide as my anchor to some of these responses. So denial of approval, number one, inadequate southern setback. I think this has been asked and answered. We can revise the site plan to feature a consistent one-hundred-foot buffer, so case closed. The concern regarding the southern setback can be fully addressed, should no longer be considered a basis for denial. That's an easy one. Number two, inadequate open space. I think this is another easy one. Our site plan featured over fifty-one percent open space, eighteen percent higher than your master plan recommendation, and this will be pushed further north as a result of pushing everything north and having that one-hundred-foot setback. Therefore, the concern regarding open space should no longer be considered a basis for denial. Item number three, traffic safety. I think this is very important, so I'm going to read word for word. Primary entrance. We now have a direct entrance connection to the signalized intersection at Thirteen and Detroit Baptist, consistent with the city engineering review letters dated October eighth and November twelfth, respectively. Secondary entrance. This isn't something that we as a developer decided to do, but it's us complying with the city's interpretation of the International Fire Code. So engineering and traffic departments require for a development of this width to have two points of access for safer turning movements. So I want to address that. From an independent review, we retained Fleece and Bandenbrink, a respected traffic engineering firm based in Farmington Hills with local experience. They represent private clients, and they also perform municipal work for various communities to provide third-party validation. The findings indicated, we submitted a traffic study on November, resubmitted in February of twenty-five, just a deceleration taper lane along Thirteen Mile Road. But the most important bullet is actually the tiniest one, trip generation. Our sixty-three-unit project falls below the city's internal thresholds for even requiring a full traffic impact study. However, as being a good community partner and a good developer, we voluntarily completed this to demonstrate good faith. The concern regarding traffic safety should not be considered a basis for denial as no city department or city retained consultant suggested that the proposed entrance locations or traffic management warrant additional improvements. Denial number four, increased stormwater runoff. I think I talked about this in good detail, but for the neighbors' sake, onsite stormwater management. Oakland County standards require onsite detention. Our basin will capture nearly all runoff, reducing flows that currently impact the nine Holly Hill Farm properties. Tree preservation. We're now preserving a larger portion of this one-hundred-foot rear yard setback. It will be permanent tree preservation area with minimal grading to maximize tree retention. Again, we could continue to degrade that, pick up additional stormwater runoff, but based on all the neighbors we've spoken with at Holly Hill Farms, it's more of a priority that we maintain the existing tree stand in as healthy of a state as possible versus doing any more destruction to that one-hundred-foot buffer. So just understand, this is at the request of the neighbors, and we're trying to be a good developer here. Drainage flow within the preservation area. Water will flow natural grading. All runoff north of that one-hundred-foot setback will be captured by the engineered system and eventually discharged into the storm system along Thirteen. Therefore, the conclusion regarding stormwater runoff is unfounded. It should not be considered as a basis for denial as no city department or city retained outside consultant suggested that the stormwater runoff or management was inadequate. And again, should we receive a positive recommendation this evening, and should we advance toward engineering approval, it would be our intention, again, to make sure that the stormwater system functions to a T and does not provide any further harm or issues to those nine residents to the south. Denial of approval, number five, reduced property values. I think this one was refuted at the August hearing, but the city's assessing department confirmed on August eleventh that nearby values are not reduced when a PUD is developed next to existing neighborhoods. The project will bring over twenty-five million dollars in new investment and generate substantial tax revenue compared to the current vacant and underutilized RA1 home sites. Therefore, the concern regarding property values does not align with the city's data and findings and should no longer be considered a basis for denial. Okay, these were the three objections brought forth by Councilman Bruce, and buckle up and enjoy the ride because I got quite a bit here. Response, or objection one, proof of marketing efforts for RA1 development. As Mayor Rich noted at the August hearing, RA1 homes east of the PUD have lingered on the market for years at prices comparable or far higher than Schaefer's acquisition price. Between 2020 and 2023, the property was broadly marketed as a primary development opportunity under RA1 zoning. Interest came from national and regional builders, senior housing operators, and group home investors, with the majority seeking to build higher development communities such as condos, townhomes, and senior living communities. In red, importantly, out of the eighty-two inquiries received over a three-year period, no offers were received for single-family RA1 development, clear evidence that the market does not support RA1 use. Despite multiple letters of intent and over a dozen agreements, no deals were closed due to restrictive zoning, low-density allowances, and the high cost of assembling adjacent parcels. Existing homes along Thirteen Mile are also outdated, reliant on well systems, and lacking modern features, conditions that make them unattractive for today's buyers. This functional obsolescence further underscores why traditional RA1 development is not feasible or market-supported in this corridor. Therefore, tearing down existing home sites and replacing them with comparable residences does not make economic sense. Conclusion. Based on NAI's three-plus years of marketing the property, demand has been consistently demonstrated for higher-density housing, uses that align directly with the spirit and intent of the Flex Residential description. By contrast, there has been no meaningful interest in maintaining large-lot RA1 development as evidenced by the comparable properties further east that have remained unsold for more than twenty-plus years at a comparable or far high, far higher economic value than were under contract to purchase the property. Continued reliance on RA1 zoning will only ensure continued stagnation and continued underutilization, while a PUD approach meets the spirit and intent of the designation meeting evolving community needs. Okay, so this is the twenty-five-page letter you guys received in your packets. This is the actual NAI brokerage listing right here that went out to all eighty-three landowners. Dr. Bruce and Mr. Bridges, this will be most important to you, but you can see in this narrative that they did list that it was zoned RA1 residential with a prime redevelopment opportunity. There were opportunities for individual, individuals to make offers on one or two or all three of the properties. So the assertion that was made at the last meeting that it was all or bust is not factual. But again, out of the eighty-two inquiries that were received, here's everyone's name and contact information. There was no interest from anyone in maintaining these lots as RA1, knocking down the homes, replacing them with something comparable, which clearly illustrates they've sat there for twenty years. Nothing's going to change. So I hope that provides the clarity you're looking for, and we can, of course, discuss it in further detail during the Q and A. The other objection brought forth, proof of misuse of the PUD process. Response, the Flex category has not fully been defined. Intentionally left broad by the likes of staff, the likes of outside consultants, the likes of your planning commission, as well as you, the folks sitting on city council, to encourage the use of the PUD mechanism as no existing zoning district corresponds to this new designation. The assertion that the proposed PUD misuses this process is in effect moving the goalposts mid-game as this category was not purpose, was purposely approved with flexible parameters. The suggestion that our interpretation of the land use description is not good enough sets a dangerous precedent as our team has made every effort to interpret and apply the limited guidance available. Moreover, council unanimously voted to adopt this designation. Moreover, council unanimously voted to adopt this designation in the 24 master plan, with staff and outside consultants recognizing its necessity to address the challenges of redeveloping select parcels across the city for purposes beyond conventional large-lot RA1 development. Conclusion. The concerns regarding misuse of the PUD process does not align with city staff or outside consultants, or the planning commission's unanimous approval of the PUD qualification. It should no longer be considered a basis for denial. Again, page 52 of the master plan gives us the greatest clarity anywhere in the master plan on density, where it can be increased to RC1 densities with a third or more open space. Again, we're 51.3%, and that's only going to go higher as a result of the 100-foot buffer. And item two, asked and answered, provide 100-foot buffer to the south. Additionally, buried on page 238 of your master plan, under the equivalent zoning district table for this district, it states the following. No equivalent zoning district. Future land use category is intended to flexibly facilitate missing-middle housing, and new districts should focus on form. So I ask you all today, what zoning category do I use for flex residential? Well, I think page 238 is asked and answered. Given that no district has been created for this district, for this flex residential master plan, a PUD is the only valid instrument by which a proposal under this land use description can even be considered. Tell me wrong. Objection three, proof that the project sets PUD rezoning precedent for other vacant properties. I think this question was asked and answered by your attorney, but at the August 11th hearing, he refuted this response, stating the proposed PUD is highly unlikely to set a precedent for other future developments. Furthermore, it was stated that since the assemblage holds a flex res description, a PUD is the only legitimate mechanism, since there is no direct zoning category in your zoning ordinance that correlates with this future land use recommendation. Therefore, the city attorney refuted the precedent for other vacant properties next to established residential communities, and it should not be considered a valid basis for denial. I want to sincerely thank you for the time this evening. My goal was to be 10 minutes, but you know me, I like to be detailed. I come from a family of five, so usually the one who talks the longest is the one who wins. So I want to thank you for the time this evening. I want to stress that we have listened, we have kept our ears open, we've listened to every comment that's made by council, every comment that is made by residents, and we're just doing our very best here to make sure everybody can hold hands and somehow sing kumbaya together on this opportunity. So I want to thank you for the time this evening. I'll open the floor up to any questions you may have. Thank you so much.
Well, before we go to questions, thank you, Mr. Schaefer, but we do have other, we have owners who have also requested reconsideration. So as a matter of due process, I would like to offer the owners of the underlying properties the opportunity to speak, as you've identified, they are here.
Yes. So I've got Jim Manna here on behalf of Mobi Investments. I've got Sharkey Haddad here on behalf of the Caldean Community Foundation, and I've got Ryan Doley and Ryan Gilleski of the Baptist Manor. Thank you.
Thank you. And do any of these entities through their representative wish to speak this evening? Okay. Please come forward.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your service. My name is Sharkey Haddad, and I work with the Caldean American Chamber of Commerce and the Caldean Community Foundation. I'm here to support the development, and I'm also going to share with you brief remarks within three minutes. Affordable housing. Affordable housing. Affordable housing. Affordable healthcare. Affordable medication. Affordable higher education. Affordable childcare. What's wrong with our local and national elected representatives? Why are they not issuing legislations that helps to solve these challenges? Why is our government saying, why is our governor, excuse me, saying, "Build, build, build" in her email message to Michiganders today? When Randy Bruce, council member, says, writing in his two-page divisive letter, saying, "Block, block, block." Last month, the governor accomplished building 75,000 affordable homes for Michiganders, which was a promise that she made five years ago, and she reached and accomplished that promise. We need to lower costs for younger and older Michiganders to afford a home. Too many of our children are spending more than half their income on rent. Too many of our children are moving out of state, away from friends and relatives. We need to fix affordable housing in Michigan, Oakland County, and yes, Farmington Hills. Politics, process, and regulations are the main reasons for affordable housing crisis. Elected officials who block affordable housing as a political strategy to win local elections are not serving the common good of Farmington Hills community and residents. Elected officials who use divisive language in addition to blocking affordable housing are toxic to Farmington Hills community and resident and should be voted out of office. I urge you to do what's right for the common good and disregard the nimby's of Farmington Hills. Finally, it was brought to our attention that some of the members who own gas stations in Farmington Hills are complaining that Mr. Randy Bruce, along with two other candidates, are placing their signs on their property without a written permission. I have a letter here from the owner of the Shell Gas Station on 12 Mile Road and Orchard Lake Road, saying you cannot place any of your lawn signs on his property without a written permission. I would like to submit this for the record, and I would like to share with every council member that to avoid placing any signs on private properties without a written permission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Manna, did you want to speak?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable council members, mayor, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Bran Jim Manna, and I'm a public servant. I work as an elected official for West Bloomfield Township, and I've been there since 2009. I also serve on several executive boards, and in my 40 years of developing and selling real estate, which I do for a living, I've never been called a scam. And I want to thank Mr. Bruce for this, because it's going to be our number-one exhibit when we sue this city for millions. I want to say that as one of the owners of Mobi Group, Mobi stands for Manna and Oru Brothers, Inc., the property on 13 Mile and what the city has put us through for the last two-and-a-half years is disgraceful. You obviously have a dysfunctional city government led by a city councilman atheist and a communist who is salivating at the opportunity to try and become mayor. He wants us so bad that he's pandering to a couple of associations by attending their meetings and pretending to care about the greater good. The facts have been presented over and over again, and all we hear are lies and attacks against the owners brought on by members of this board, specifically Comrade Bruce. The project was unanimously approved by the planning commission, yet you turned us down over and over against your own master plan. Well, let me make you this promise, which will hopefully end some of your political dreams and desires. And that is what we plan on suing this city and you personally, which will cost the city and taxpayers hundreds of thousands, if not millions. There's a silver lining to all of this, that is, after this election, when you lose, that this hopefully will be the end of your political life. I end with this. Please be sure and get permission to put up your political signs from the owners and not the employees that do not have that authority. I promise you, we will be speaking to every business owner where you drop your signs. You know, this is, I took this letter very personally, and that's why I decided to speak today, speak up and let you know how I really feel. This is a disgrace, and you're a disgrace, and you should not be in political office.
Are there any representatives from the Baptist Manor who would like to speak this evening? Please come forward.
Speak up. I know it is.
And are you the only one speaking from Baptist Manor? Okay, so this will be the last of the presentations brought to us by the people who have requested the reconsideration.
Good evening, council. Obviously, we've met quite a few times here, and I've never had the opportunity to speak, but I'd like to do so. As Mr. Bruce noted, the Baptist Manor has been in the community for 70 years. We are a nonprofit, faith-based, 501(c)(3) that provides senior housing, okay? We have a product that has been there for 70 years. Our newest building in our community is 40 years old at this point. We have obtained these properties through a 21-year span, one of which...
Please address council.
Excuse me?
You should be addressing council.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Over 21 years ago, we obtained parcel six and five. They were donated to us by church members, okay? They were donated. Parcel seven, we purchased from a resident who essentially aged out of her being able to take care of the house herself, and she came to us pleading for us to move her into our community because the house was too much, and she knew that she could not sell the house on her own. We did so. We purchased the house and we moved her into our community. She still lives with us today. I personally have worked for the Baptist Manor for 25 years. I drive by these unit, these, these properties every single day, and not once in 25 years have I seen any progress with any one of them. They have sat up for sale with for-sale signs in the front yards. Nobody has purchased them. Nobody has built upon them. Nobody has approved, improved them in any way, and they have fallen, obviously, into disrepair. But is the answer to just allow that to happen? I don't know. We see it as an opportunity to build more senior housing. It's something we've done for 70, 70 years already. It's, it's the business we run, the business we operate. I've already done it for 25 years. I plan to do it for hopefully another 25 years, if God allows me to do that. It's, it's not what I set out to do with my life, but it is my purpose now. I've been given a responsibility of operating that company and providing senior housing. All, all we are asking is for the opportunity to do so. I haven't heard a lot of rejection directly aimed at the Baptist Manor, but we are, we are in this project, all right? Frankly, I don't know if the Baptist Manor could manage the development of the property on our own, because we're not developers. So we looked at this as the perfect opportunity for properties we already owned to move forward. And to be clear, plots six and five are wooded. They've never been built upon. Property seven is torn down and is woods. Property three, the other property we own to round out the square, is a house with inhabitants. We have not allowed these units to fall into disrepair because frankly, most of them were never developed in the first place. The one house that we tore down was the resident that currently lives on, in our campus, and we did so as a favor to her and as a way to create contiguous property development next to our community in which we were given property through a donation. That's all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Okay. So the next step in our process is we will open for council to ask the applicant and owners any questions at this point. I see a hand from Mr. Bridges.
Thank you. I just wanted to rise in, in defense of Councilmember Bruce. Councilmember Bruce has served as council for 20 years. He's been a member of the zoning board for many years. He loves this community. He knows the zoning laws of this community quite well, and I just took offense to the fact this personal attack against Councilmember Bruce, it was not necessary at all. Let me make those comments to you. So I appreciate the comments made by the applicant, and I just want to make that comment there, that I thought those comments were inappropriate, were not helpful, and not beneficial to the process at all. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Knell.
Yeah. I, I need to speak up, too. This has been a long process. I realize that, and I've said before that I believe in due process, I believe in democracy, and it's not always clean, and it's not always easy. But letting everyone have a voice and be heard is an important part of the process. I have had, I have not always agreed with everyone in this room on this proposal, but I have done my best to say complimentary things about the Caldean Foundation, about Schaefer Development, about the residents, about Baptist Manor, about everyone in this room. I've said complimentary things, and that's because I've wanted to keep this civil and not about personal attacks. This isn't about whether I like you, or you, or I don't like you. For me, this has always been a disagreement simply about setbacks and density. That's it. It is not personal. It is not racist, and I am offended that anyone would try to make this a bigoted or a racist issue. This is simply about density and setbacks. For me, I'm sure for, you know, for others, there's been some water concerns and so forth, but I'm hoping as we go forward tonight, despite what's been said and some of the attacks, that we can keep this civil and professional, because I know everyone is here because they care. They care about this community, they live here now, and they want to keep it the great place that it is and bring new people into our community, into this great place. So let's just all try to be friendly and civil, even though we may not always disagree with each other tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other, any questions for the applicants or owners from any of us at this time? Okay, well, then we're going to go on to the blue slips. I will call your name, and then the two who will follow. Dr. Stacy Noir, to be followed by Isaac Dunn, to be followed by Thomas Bader. Dr. Noir?
Heard your applicant's comments, and you looked at your legal memo, did he address me?
And before you begin, I think we have a lot of veterans of public comment here, but just to be clear, comments are to be made to council. You have a maximum of three minutes, and thank you very much for being here.
Good evening, city council. I'm very distressed about the fact that a month ago, a little over a month ago, it was a clear vote to not move forward with the pod. I spoke at that meeting, I got cut off, I'm a little bit long-winded, like some other people that have been talking tonight. But I want to focus on something that is the most important thing to me with this development. It's the safety of the traffic at 13 Mile and Middle Belt. I was walking my dog on Saturday morning, and I saw like a backup of cars, and I was like, "That's interesting. I wonder what that's about." And so I, you know, kind of snoopy like walked by, and I didn't want to be intrusive and ask, and then I found out via the internet that a car had just ran off the road. I didn't even see a car. I saw the, the tow truck, lift truck, whatever, there. I didn't even see the car. I don't know where it was. I don't know how it got, it must have gone down into a ditch, so I didn't even see it. My daughter is 14. She will be able to get her permit the day before on Christmas Eve. I signed her up for driver's ed classes today. The thought of her driving to North Farmington High School and having to go through that intersection as it is, is terrifying. There have been days where we're sitting there for five or 10 minutes, and I don't want my kids to be late for school or too late for school, so I, you know, like quickly shift into traffic. So I, you know, like quickly shift into traffic, and I can do that because I'm an experienced driver. My daughter's not going to be able to do that. I don't know with this revision, how many units there are. I know with the older, the old plan, it was 63 units. That's 126 additional drivers that are going to be going through that area. That, to me, is completely unacceptable. There is North Farmington High School that is about two miles from that intersection. Mercy High School is about two miles from that intersection. And Aim High School is about two miles from that intersection. To put that many more drivers in that intersection, which was already a C or D or F, I don't know, I keep hearing different numbers and ratings about it, is completely unacceptable to me. I want to know that when my daughter goes to school, that she's going to come home. How many of you on the council know who Carmelo Tybus is? Does anyone know? Because he was a sophomore at North Farmington High School that died in a car accident. I don't know where the car accident was. I'm going to guess it probably wasn't at 13 Mile and Middlebelt. But I wonder what it was like for those parents to know that their child died in a car accident. Who's paying for the child's funeral? Who's paying for the parents to take time off of work to deal with the grief of waking up in the morning and knowing that their child isn't there anymore? So I think that if we want to approve very dense units at 13 Mile and Middlebelt, where it's already just a completely unsafe situation, you're essentially signing death certificates for people, including teenagers who are learning how to drive. And, and it's disgusting.
Thank you. Isaac Dunn, followed by Thomas Barber.
Good evening. I've been had a lot of opportunities to be here because I've been sick and missed a couple of these meetings, but I'm a property owner that's directly east to where this development wants to be. And I keep hearing about the buffer zone for the residents to the south, because it's this whole subdivision, or the subdivision that's across the street, but nothing about considerations for my property. That retention pond, that massive retention pond, concerns me. Mosquitoes, I don't care what they, how I say it, there are going to be tons of mosquitoes and bugs. And I have a son definitely allergic to mosquitoes. One mosquito bite, ER. Visit, you know, just from mosquitoes. Secondly, the trees. We're talking about, you know, they came by my house and gave me a card and said they were, they had some extra trees, so there would be some planting or whatever. But, you know, when I look at this plan, I get no buffer zone. Nothing significant, you know. Now granted, I would like to not live next to all of these vacant lots, though they haven't been vacant for 25 years, like is, is continuing to be said. I just, you know, I'm concerned about it. Concerned about the retention pond. I'm concerned about the buffer zone. Definitely concerned about the traffic. My son goes to Warner and get up in the morning. I have to leave extra early to try to get out of the house to get him to school on time, because the traffic is horrendous. And same thing coming home. When I pick him up from school, traffic is horrendous. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thomas Bader, to be followed by Angie Smith.
Hi, I'm Thomas Bader. I live at 29809 Northbrook. I thank you for your time. You know, we've done this over and over again. So I'm just going to reiterate some points that we've already talked about. But, you know, the reason my wife and I moved here in the first place was the character of Farmington Hills. And we were looking out in Orient Township and stuff, and it's just beautiful out here. And this will be the opposite. This will be exactly what we were not looking for, and that's why we came here in the first place. So I'm, I'm just asking for the character of Farmington Hills, which is very unique. It is gorgeous. And then for the wildlife, we have, we have no place to go. We already know that, and they're already being squeezed out. It's zoned RA1, and it's, they're asking for exceptions all over the map. It's, it's, we've talked about the height. We've talked about the zoning, and it's all exceptions to the rule. And so I'm just asking that you keep Farmington Hills the way it already is. The blight thing, I was here when one of the council members talked about walking through the area and walking through the properties and how horrible it was and how something needed to be done. And I was just appalled. Like, we're going to reward bad behavior? Like, you know, and I said it back then, and I'll say it again. Like, if it's blighted, if my house was blighted, I would get a citation. So I just don't quite understand that. I don't know about the individual lots. I've heard that they can't be so, but now I'm hearing they can, and I really don't know what the answer is to that. And then there's the density, which we've already know the density is higher than what's allowed. And, you know, it's all exceptions. And the last thing I will say, if it was your neighborhood, and, and they were going to change your neighborhood, and, and Holly Hills, I feel really bad for them, because it's worse for them, with these houses that are going to be towering over their properties. And then I, I know that the same thing happened with the center over at Northwestern, and I know the neighbors where the, the cancer center is there, and man, they, they just destroyed their properties. They made all kinds of promises. But you, you go there, all the trees are gone. All the privacy is gone. And I think that's what's going to happen here. Thank you.
Thank you. Angie Smith, to be followed by Louise Lieberman.
Good evening. What a smear campaign. What an October surprise that happened in September. What we all need to understand is, one of the two of these people will be the mayor again. Michael Bridges will be city council again. So how is that going to look when you got to come back here again? So I have had a relationship with both of these men for a very long time. I love and respect them both, not only as my friends, but as my council members. They have both set on zoning commission. So for someone to stand here, and oh, by the way, I am one of the candidates that was mentioned with the sign. And I've been on school board for 10 years, and I'm running for city council now, and my signs have always been in front of a gas station. And now, all of a sudden, out of the clear blue, we got an epiphany. Pull your signs down. I will pull my signs down. I will not put them in front of the gas stations. But I stand behind my council members that sit before me today. Talk about disrespect. I'll be 63 this month, and I ain't trying to move out of my condo. I'm dying up in there. And it will be going to my children. Thank you, Councilmember Knell, for your comments. This has nothing to do with race. This has nothing to do with people not liking each other. It's somebody that's done, made a deal. A deal. A contract. And now you want to attack this city council. So I say that, most of the people that stood here and talked about you can't vote for you anyway. But all three of you got my vote, November 4. Thank you.
Thank you. Louise Lieberman, to be followed by Adele Letterman.
I'm Louise Lieberman. I'm in Westgate. I'd like my name added to the list of people who don't want you to reconsider this. I have two concerns I'd like to bring up. One is how powerful the phrase "back-to-back hundred-year storm" sounds. It's a statistical, useful storm planning tool. We've had many hundred-year storms. Just the language is more powerful than a hundred-year storm actually is. Also, I'd like to say you are the most powerful people in our city, and if you can't get a response out of the developer in a reasonable amount of time, what will we, who have come again and again, be able to do despite many, many reassurances that we will be heard, we will, that our issues will be addressed in a timely manner? And my last question is, will those mini parks be open to everybody in the whole city? That wasn't addressed, or just the people in the PUD? Thank you.
Thank you. Adele Letterman, to be followed by, Adam Peploski.
Hi, I'm Adele Letterman from Westgate subdivision. Residents are here over and over and over and over again and over again to protect our corner of the earth. We are fighting to protect our neighborhood and our way of life. I've said this before, but I'll say it again. Twice I have spoken to Mr. Schaefer in the past, and I asked him to cut the density to 30, 35 homes. Both times, he said, "I cannot make a profit." I thank you for voting against this PUD and protecting our neighborhoods. This PUD with the additional sidewalks, work of art, 63 homes, is still too dense for 12.5 acres of land. It's not the right place. Please continue to support the residents of Farmington Hills. And I do have just one comment. Why can't, I understand why the residents have to only have three minutes. Why can't the other people only be, have three minutes also? The ones that are reconsidering, why can't they have three minutes, too? Thank you.
Adam Peploski, to be followed by Melanie Peploski.
Hello, my name's Adam Peploski. I live at 30179 Westgate. I was here at the last meeting as well, and I voiced my sentiments against this, and I continue that. But after today, I do have more concerns, I would say. Not so much from a developer and discussion standpoint, but I just don't like the idea of being bullied into something. And it seems like a lot of what we heard here were threats and coercions almost. I don't want to say anything too specific, but that seems like the wrong way to discuss. And just like you had mentioned, keeping things civil, I think, is very appropriate. And now, I don't know how many other people out there feel this way, but I, I feel worried about a development like this for more than just setbacks and water and reasons. So thank you for time, and thank you for your considerations and votes.
Thank you. Melanie Peploski, followed by Steve Schaefer.
Hi. So I just wanted to voice my opinion that I am against this. I understand that they're going to have two entrances and exits for their development. And that's great for their people, because they'll have the decision of whether to do a left turn at a light, where it's safer for them, or to go the easy route when they go right, where they go east towards something. Whereas people out of the Westgate Division don't have that option. If we need to go east and make a left, we're still contending with all of this traffic, and we'll still be contending with people out of their development turning right, and people going into their development at that same time. So it really doesn't help us. It helps their development more. And I still have concerns for the properties directly adjacent to this. To say it won't affect them in their resale value and their life and their families, they're living there now. They didn't expect a large development to come in and take that away from them. And I hope that the unfortunate threats that were made here tonight don't deter you from your original decision to say no, and listen to us, the public, who are living in this situation, saying that we don't want that. Thank you.
Thank you. Steven Schaefer, to be followed by Craig LaPointe.
Thank you. I just felt compelled to come up and fill out a blue card. I really, there are some things said tonight that I definitely don't agree with. I think it wasn't right. There have been some things said that I think some people interpreted maybe wrongly, maybe it wasn't malicious. But I got to tell you, I started my career here 40 years ago. I've had my offices in Farmington Hills since I've started. My kids live in Farmington Hills. My office is in Farmington Hills. My wife's office is in Farmington Hills. She's coacher at the Department of Bosford for obstetrics and gynecology. She's taken care of this community for 40 years. We love this community. I like doing business here. Look, I've been able to engage with most of you one-on-one, and I do appreciate that. I don't necessarily agree with, with what has been said here tonight by the landowners, and I apologize for that. I feel badly, because I didn't come here to be confrontational. But, you know, we just want to try to do the right thing, and we want to bring good development to the community. And I think this project could be a very good project. There were some things that were pointed out. We can revise it. Boy, having a 100-foot buffer versus potential cluster development that could go in here under the current ordinance with houses 35 feet from the, those rear yards and removing a lot of those trees. I mean, I think we really need to look at what the alternatives are, and we want to try to do the right thing. And I do appreciate you letting us come up here tonight for a week's consideration, or hopefully that you'll grant it. And I think we need to bring the temperature down a bit, and we're just trying to do our best. We, we do pride our reputation. We've had a great reputation for over 40 years in the communities we work in and the community partners. But again, I, I just don't like the heat in the room with what's going on. So I want to extend my apologies for some of what was said tonight. I don't think it was appropriate, so.
Thank you. Craig LaPointe, to be followed by Lindsay Maytak.
Wow. You guys got a tough job. I guess I'd like to thank you all, because I, I don't like the things that were said here tonight to anybody. Just not right. I'm going to try and stay on track. I'm going to go with where I originally started, and then I'm going to bring up some points that I brought up in the past that still stand. All right. My name's Craig LaPointe. I live in Holly Hill Farms, and I want to start off by saying I'm still opposed to this project. I've had a video uploaded and directed to city council members twice. Once at the last meeting, when we were told that the project was shut down, and then again today, in case you did not see it last time. I hope that you all have taken the time to watch the two-and-a-half-minute video that emphasizes my concerns. Anyone who sees this should understand that this is more than just a little concerning and detrimental to my property and my safety. The water management issue has not been resolved. It has actually been made worse. And I think the video is pretty apparent. To continue some of the things, well, first off, it seems pretty apparent to me that people in Westgate and the north, they don't want it. People in the south, they don't want it. In Woodbrook, we don't want it. And then neighbors to the east don't want it. This matter was closed. Now it's brought up again? I don't have anything against the developers or Baptist Manor or Mobi Development. I just, I have selfish concerns. I have my yard that I seem to be taking the brunt of the problems. Nobody's addressing this. So once again, I thank you guys all for the job that you do. Nobody needs to take abuse like that. Not right. Once again, when I moved here 25 years ago, I moved into a single-family residential home. And I'd like it to stay that way. So thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Lindsay Maytak. I have a card for Sharkey Hadad, but he already spoke. So that will be followed by Michelle Negota.
When this PUD was denied, the right decision was made, because it is in violation of the applicable regulations and required criteria of a PUD under Section 34-3.20 of the zoning ordinance, and would cause numerous adverse effects. Applicable Regulation 1A, a proposal must achieve the goals of the master plan. This proposal limits future cross-connections, insufficiently buffers, fails to adopt low-impact design... design, and does not preserve enough trees. 1B, approval is based on the sole discretion of the city council. This was already denied with no obligation to proceed. 1C, a PUD must create open space suitable to the needs of the area. The setbacks of this plan create minimal open space in an area known for abundant open space. 1D, a density not normally permitted must result in the promotion of public health, safety, and welfare of the existing community. Instead, this density surge would decrease traffic safety. 1E, a new development must be compatible with the area and cannot cause an adverse effect. This proposal lacks compatibility and would result in flooding and traffic issues. Section 2, PUD criteria for qualifications. 2B, a PUD cannot be submitted for the sole purpose of circumventing applicable zoning. By failing to benefit the community, this plan is designed to avoid the RA1 zoning to request RC1. 2C, a PUD cannot be used when a different zoning could achieve the proposed land use. This would need to be constructed elsewhere in an area with RC1 zoning. 2D, the added service and facility loads and traffic impact must be mitigated. This proposal would result in an F traffic rating at the new intersection. 2E, a PUD must satisfactorily achieve at least one of eight possible city objectives pertaining to open space, compatibility, buffering, and tree replacement and natural feature preservation beyond the minimum. Not a single city objective was met because the developers proposed the bare minimum or less instead of exceeding these objectives. 2F, a PUD cannot be used solely to increase density. This plan failed to provide adequate benefits while only requesting a variance for density. This proposal would also adversely affect the community due to inadequate stormwater mitigation, destruction of the trees and hills, decrease in property values and marketability, increase in sound and light pollution, loss of privacy, security, and safety, unsafe traffic, loss of wildlife habitat, incompatibility, disruption of historic neighborhoods, surplus of attached housing, lack of affordability, loss of character, and failure to adopt ecologically friendly practices. I urge you to keep this proposal denied accordingly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Michelle Nagoda to be followed by John Nagoda.
DEN sity. Ms. Noel, you had the perfect thing. It isn't that, and we've said this before, it isn't so much that we object to having something put there. We object to the density. Wes Bloomfield also objects to the density of the Schaefers, where they want to do another PUD and put fifteen homes on two point zero six acres. It isn't feasible. It doesn't fit in with the rest of the neighborhood. That's all we're saying. You can't just say, "Well, I don't like the zoning. Well, I'll apply for a PUD. I don't like this. Let's do that." It is density. That is our main thing. No one is saying that something shouldn't go there. But sixty-three? It's too much. It's just too much. We hope that you'll deny their reconsideration request. Thank you.
Thank you. John Nagoda to be followed by Eric Schmidt.
First off, I'd like to object to the comments made about Councilman Bruce. They were totally uncalled for, and I think they should have been gavelled down. Thank you. Mayor, council members. I'm John Nagoda. My family and I have resided in the Westgate neighborhood for forty-three years. We are here once again about the Mulberry Tabernacle proposed PUD. We were notified with the Crouch office that Schaefer Construction would be asking the council to reconsider the motion for approval of the PUD, and it was denied on August ninth or the eleventh. I don't have the correct date, I apologize. I have viewed and listened to the planning commission meeting where Mr. Schaefer asked that the decision be deferred to after the election in November. Which brings me to ask the question. What's going on here? Is he hoping that a new council and/or mayor will approve the PUD? Or does he know something that the residents don't know? We've been arguing this issue for four years. The land is zoned RA1 residential. Even if the new master plan changes at the variable, if approved, the variable doesn't mean that you cram as many units or houses as you possibly can into the area. We have asked for a reduction in density. Sixty-plus homes on twelve acres is ridiculous. Council has agreed in the past with us. Also, Wes Bloomfield apparently is having the same problem with Schaefer Construction, who wants to put fifteen single-family homes on two point zero six acres using a PUD. Sounds familiar, doesn't it? Wes Bloomfield is saying the same thing. Density, safety, density. You heard me talk about that the last five or six times I was here. Safety, density, and safety. We all know that something's going to go there. But, okay, there are two articles, by the way. One about Mulberry Tabernacle, and one about the Wes Bloomfield issue. And that's in the Farmington Press dated September third of 2025. Makes an interesting read, if you haven't seen it yet. Also, at the most recent planning commission meeting in Farmington Hills, Schaefer Construction presented another PUD for Baptist Manor to tear down three homes and put up six. They're trying to set a precedent, in my opinion. If approved, they'll argue then, "Well, you let us do it here, why not next door?" I understand maximizing profit. That's what you're in business for, but not at the cost of ruining our neighborhoods with density and safety issues, and certainly not at the expense of our long-established residents and taxpayers. We chose Farmington Hills because of the large lots.
Thank you.
Warehouses. You know my arguments. Thank you very much.
Eric Schmidt to be followed by...
Is this your hat, sir?
Mr. Nagoda? Your hat?
Who's going to start my clock? Oh. Thank you. All right. Good evening. Thank you for allowing us the time to speak today. I'm not going to be as brutal as Moby, but they kind of took a crap all over everything, and where'd they go? Kind of a continuing theme with what they've done to that property over there. I'm not going to try to relitigate why the city council said no last time. Six of you voted no. You did the right thing. What happened is it sounds like the reasons that were provided for the no weren't sufficient enough to meet any legal challenges that may come. It comes down to two issues, in my opinion, really three. Traffic does not meet the standard that we need for safety. They do not have the... Did not have the appropriate setbacks. And they do not do the... They do not have the replacement trees. Those three issues should be it. Done, done, done. They have had multiple opportunities to come back multiple times to change those standards. The hundred-foot setback has been there since the beginning. Unfortunately, nobody had brought it up, and it was able to go to the wayside. If it had come up previously, I'm sure, as they showed today, the Schaefers would have made those accommodations. You said no. Don't allow for reconsideration. Instead, go back and change the reasons why you said no. Allow the Schaefers to go back through the zoning process, reapply, and go through the process appropriately. No is no. We don't allow people yes after no. Go back through the process. I understand that it's time-consuming. I understand that there may be some issues with it. But again, this sets precedent. He just mentioned it a moment ago with precedent, and last time I spoke, I mentioned precedent. And it was highly unlikely that this precedent would be set for the PUD. Well, the zoning board meeting, the precedent again came up, where the Schaefers were told that they... It did not seem as though they had sufficient landscaping and tree replacement processes, but they put it through anyway, and now we're here again. It should not be allowed for them to move the trees to wherever they want to satisfy that made-up requirement. It is not a made-up requirement, it's a very real thing. So, don't allow this to be reconsidered. Allow us to understand that this is why it was no, and move on from this process and allow the Schaefers to come back with something better. I'm very sorry that Mr. Bruce had to deal with those attacks today. I don't think that any members of city councils should be attacking each other, should be concealing things from each other. I think that overall, this project and this process has really shown that we can work together, we can come to something that makes a lot of sense. And if we follow the processes and we don't use the courts to litigate because we miss a deadline, or because some other thing comes up where we don't get our way, go through and follow the process, wait your turn, and you can come up again next time. I greatly appreciate everybody's time today. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Leig to be followed by Nancy Jennings.
My name is Catherine Leig. I live in the Westgate subdivision. I would also like to thank all of the council members for their no votes last meeting. I would also like to apologize on behalf of everyone to Mr. Bruce, because this is something that should never have happened. An attack personally should never have happened. Again, we come here because we want to protect our neighborhoods. We come here because we want to protect our way of life, and because complicating it more and more and more with more people, more cars, and more traffic is not going to do anyone any good. It won't do the city any good. The only person or the only people that it will be doing any good for are the people that will make a profit from it. And they have made sure that they would make a profit from it. And also, I don't believe that the attacks, the bullying, or any of that should change anyone's mind. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Nancy Jennings to be followed by Wanda Whalen.
Hello. I have an opposite opinion of most of my fellow residents. My name is Nancy Jennings. I live in Wood Creek at thirteen in Middle Belt. I have driven that corridor with my daughter, taking her to swim and school for twenty years. Well, thirteen years of her school time. One of the things that I've grown to appreciate about Farmington Hills since I've moved here is our variety. We have apartments, we have small houses, we have large houses, we have mansions, we have small businesses, we have big businesses. We have all of those things, and they coexist. In my own personal life, I have seen many friends who have gone from a small house to a large house, or from an apartment to a small house. It's one of the cool things about our community. We lack affordable housing. We lack opportunities for seniors to live in one-floor living. If you've ever looked for a ranch condo, you would know, you know, you might be aware of that. The rejection of this proposal seems to be rooted in a "not-in-my-backyard" mindset, which too often presents... Prevents communities from moving forward. When we allow NIMBY attitudes to dominate, we miss opportunities to create housing that is more affordable, inclusive, sustainable. Communities thrive when we balance individual preferences with the broader needs of all residents and those who would seek to become residents. I would disagree that the only opportunity for this proposal is to get a profit, which I would remind you, as a capitalist community, you're supposed to be able to make a profit when you do a business. It's not a nonprofit. But the residents that would live there would benefit. The seniors that might live in improved housing in the Baptist Manor community would benefit. Not everyone can afford a $400,000 house on a half an acre. And in my last few seconds, I would also say that we chose, personal antidote, the swim club that my kid belonged to because Thirteen Mile was not safe for her to ride her bike on. That sidewalk's not safe. It's not safe for walking. I drive it all the time. No one ever walks it, or very rarely. We chose the other swim club because she could go down Twelve Mile and take a sidewalk and ride a bike. So, I encourage you to consider the opportunities for those future residents that might live there. Thank you.
Thank you. Wanda Whalen, and then the last one we have is Amy Broglan-Petersen.
I want to thank all of you for letting me speak. I'm not good at this. I'm going to try to make it through this. But why am I here? Why are these people here? Didn't you get voted down? I don't understand. I thought this was a democracy with some kind of voting system and all of that. Well, anyway. I don't understand it got voted down. What happened? I thought, once the city council vote no as a majority, then that's what it is? No. And many others I've talked to, we've seek counsel on this matter because we're sick of it. It's been over a year, almost two years, and these people, I have nothing against this company, but do they have to come back all the... They get this many times to come back? Is that a pro, a professional that does that? They can't get it right? You know, Schaefer stated themselves how many times they've been up here. I have nothing personally against you. I have nothing personally against Baptist Manor or none of those people, but the thing is, it was one house. I'm directly affected. One house behind me and my husband day that burnt down. One house! And they want to build fifteen buildings on less than twelve acres? I can't get that. I mean, I smoked a lot of weed in the seventies, but I ain't smoking now. So, I ask mercy from you guys, and the people that came out to walk the property, they saw what's happening. We can pitch golf balls to Thirteen Mile Road, and they want... This is talking about density. It's out of control. Trying to think of the points I had. The longstanding residents that spoke tonight in Westgate, the people that's east and west, and my directions are not good, north and south, they've been here a long time. They can't get up and just leave. Schaefer can go somewhere else. Farmington Hills got a lot of open land where they can, you know, prospect for and all of that. Why this... It must be gold on this land. I don't understand it. They just driving and driving and driving. I don't understand. Is it gold? Did I miss something? Then I need to do some more digging in my backyard. But I just want to thank you guys for checking us out and listening, because we only get three minutes, and they get all the time in the world. It's sad, because these people are getting older. A lot of people in Holly Hills and the surrounding areas, we're getting older. We don't want to have to smell dirt and listen to noise from ten o'clock and from eight to ten. You know what I'm saying? They want to build something, build it somewhere. We not trying to stop the build. We just want them to build it somewhere else. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. And the last card we have is Ms. Broglan-Petersen. Good evening.
Good evening. Amy Broglan-Petersen, Westgate Homeowners Association. I'm here tonight late because I was helping my kid with her math. I missed, apparently, a lot of the good stuff. I'm not sure why we're back here, frankly. Did something in the proposal change? Because I don't... I don't see a reason why anybody should reconsider anything. My kid didn't want to do her math homework tonight. She wanted to go outside and play with her friend, and I had a clear choice. I could say yes, I could say no. You guys just a month, two months ago, said no, based on a lot of information that you've been reviewing and receiving over the past three years. You said no, presumably based on a lot of research with some very good reasons and thought behind it. And I'm unclear as to why we're even standing here, except one thing I do know from being in the business world myself and writing a lot of contracts, is that a lawyer is typically something we utilize to stall. So it seems as if maybe we're just trying to stall just long enough for an election because presumably there's a few people seated before us right now who would maybe vote otherwise based on what they see or hear or receive out of Schaefer and Moby. So, I don't know why we're here tonight. I'm kind of tired of this. I'm sure you guys are. I don't know why you'd want to hear some more. They have very little legal basis to stand from, based on what I've seen. So, there seems to be no reason why any proposal that's being put forward that's no different than the last should not go back through the process from the very beginning and be reviewed through city planning efforts before coming to city council again. Nothing has changed virtually since the last time I spoke, so I really don't even need to give you the reasons why I don't think this project is a good one. What I will say is... What I will say is, based on what I did hear, it sounds like there's a lot of personal attacks and that's pathetic. And I'm sorry to hear that for any of you who had to face any of that. That shouldn't be happening and, and it's a weak argument at best. So I hope you make a good decision again tonight and stand with what you stood with last time. And I think these guys should go back through the process from the beginning if they'd like to, to have reconsideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So council, we are back procedurally. The first question for us, and let me ask before we do this, do we want to take a quick break or do we want to keep going? Okay, we're gonna keep going. All right. The first question for council is whether there is a motion to reconsider. The motion can only be made by a council member who voted in favor of the prior motion to deny. If a motion to reconsider is made and fails, this item is closed and there will be no further decisions. Or sorry, discussions. If such a motion is made and passed, then we will be back at the point in the process where Councilmember Bruce's prior motion to deny, as stated at the August 11th, 2025 meeting, is back on the table as though it had not yet been voted on. And we can continue the discussions and deliberations on that motion as well as consider applicant's request to propose, to postpone these discussions and any decision to a later date. So, is there a motion to reconsider council's decision at the August 11th, 2025 meeting to deny Planned Unit Development Plan 2, 2024, including Site Plan 56-8-2024?
Mayor, I have a question for the city attorney. I heard tonight numerous members of the audience said, well, why are we here? Like, what is it that allows them to ask for a reconsideration? Could the city attorney explain the due process that applicants are entitled to? So that the residents understand why they have this ability to ask for a reconsideration?
Thank you, Ms. Noel.
Yes, certainly. So a, a city council operates under its own rules and guidelines that it has established for its meeting procedures, as well as Robert's Rules of Procedure. So council has a set of procedures. Most public bodies and other bodies do have a set of procedures that are followed. Those adopted policies allow for a decision to be reconsidered at a subsequent meeting if council would like to. And in this instance, the applicant who has filed an application with the city to have an approval, as you all know, for its property, the applicant and owner, the owner owns the property and there is a developer who's come forward as the applicant with the owner requesting approval on their property. You can request all sorts of different types of approvals on your property and you are entitled to a review by the city of that request, that application relative to your property. They have done that. City made a decision and they obviously recognize the rules that have, have been established by city council, allow for council to reconsider that decision at the next subsequent meeting, which this is. They have filed an applica-, or a request, a formal request, asking city council, both the property owner and the developer that's before you, have asked for it to be reconsidered, that decision to be reconsidered. So they recognize the procedures that have been set up and they're exercising their right to ask council to reconsider it. So it is brought back to council. They are provided, in America, we're entitled to due process, as are you. That's why you were given information that this meeting was taking place. So, so that you were given an opportunity to speak again and be present and see what's happening in person if you so choose. So it's all related to that. It's all established in city council's rules and that is why we are here tonight. Council is doing what it says it's going to do with any application if there is an aggrieved party applicant and that is reconsidering that decision. So council has it in its discretion whether or not it would like to reconsider. And that's why a motion to reconsider is being put on the table to see if any council members are, would like to make that motion and have it considered and voted by your city council.
And it's not just any city council member could make the motion.
I'm sorry.
It has to be someone who is on the prevailing side of that motion. So I will ask, is there a motion to reconsider council's decision at the August 11th, 2025 meeting to deny Planned Unit Development Plan 2, 2024, including Site Plan 56-8-2024?
Madam Mayor, if I may, can I make a comment?
Please.
If this was exactly the same proposal as last time, and thank you for the explanation, Mr. Attorney. If this is exactly the same proposal as last time, this would be, this would, there'd be no discussion here. From my perspective, there is a change to the proposal and it's a substantive change in regards to the setback at 100 feet, which was the main point I had last time. So I'm gonna, last time, I was coming to this meeting being open to, let's discuss what's on the table. I have to admit, given the proceedings that's been going on this evening, I'm finding that very difficult to do, given the tenor, given the lecturing. I am very torn as to whether to give that discussion, get that discussion going on the table. So that's my honest view where I'm at. Mr. Steve Schreiber, thank you for your comment. I appreciate that. However, I'm gonna make the motion so that we can discuss it and then we can vote. So I move that the council reconsider its decision at the August 11th, 2025 meeting to deny Planned Unit Development Plan 2, 2024, including Site Plan 56-8-2024.
Support.
Support. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Ms. Noel.
So I do appreciate the 100-foot setback. That's a step in the right direction. But I've mentioned the density before, so I'm just gonna put this on the table. I don't need any feedback. I'm just gonna say, if this proposal comes back exactly as it is proposed, presented tonight, I am still a no. But I am willing to allow them the ability to go back to the drawing board and try to reduce the density because that's what I've requested. That's what I've heard from many of the neighbors. Many of the neighbors have said they know at some point something is gonna go on this property. They just want less density. And so I am willing to give them another chance, just like if you owned a business and you submitted a proposal and you weren't chosen and the company said, hey, here's the feedback. We didn't choose you, but go back. If you make these changes, I'll take another look at it. I'm willing to do that as well. So yeah, I'm, I'm willing to give them time to go back and see if they can reduce the density. I'm a no if the density isn't reduced.
Any other discussion? Mr. Bridges?
Thank you. I just want to make this comment. This particular proposal has been before council since April of 2024. That is a total of 16 months. I don't know any other project have taken this long for deliberations in my 17 years on council. And the city has bent over backwards with the developer in regards to working with them and allowing them to come back several occasions. And we've done our job in regards to this issue, in my viewpoint. We've done our job. We've been very, very patient regarding the process. And I, I believe that we should not reconsider this project because of the fact that we've already deliberated, deliberated on it for 16 months. My comments stand where I had earlier. I think the project is out of character for the neighborhood. This is a RA1 district that, that's being allowed to, I mean, proposed to allow for RC1 development, which in my viewpoint would disturb that area. And I've been on this council for 17 years. It's been my, my goal on council to make sure we preserve our neighborhoods in Farmington Hills. They pay about 70% of the taxes in our community and, and it mentions, somebody mentioned earlier about the fact they moved to Farmington Hills because of the rural, the character of the community, open space, the trees. And I would not like this project in my neighborhood. And so why would I support it in somebody else's neighborhood, RA1 district? I think the Schaefer's done what they can to make the project viable. But I, and I, I am not going to vote for reconsideration of this at all. I believe that council have been very, very patient with this developer and allowed them ample time to make the case about their development. And I'm not convinced that it's the right project for that particular area. I'm not. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak? Ms. Boloway?
Yes. I support what Councilmember Valerie Noel has said. But before I give my explanation and my reasoning is, I'd like to really apologize to Randy and to Michael Bridges and to anyone else who were subject to that barrage of very horrible information. You know, although it wasn't directed at me personally, I felt it and I think no one deserves to be treated that way. Every council member here, when they, we make decisions, we make it based upon what we think is best. And we respect each other's opinion even when they don't agree with us. That is the beauty of this council, that we are civil and that we respect each other. And we do not allow other people to talk that way to a fellow council member without an explanation or just our own commentary. Now, back to the reconsideration. I would vote for the reconsideration. And one of the reasons, I know that we all live, we all moved in this neighborhood for the large spaces, the wildlife, the trees, the beauty and all of that. When I moved here and, and 30 years ago, I moved into a subdivision that no one wanted. There was a lot of pushback about how it was going to impact their property value. None of that happened. In fact, during that particular time, there were some council members who were threatened with recall. I don't know if that went through or not, but it was a very contentious period of time. Now my subdivision is there. It's more dense than perhaps where you live. But it's one of the most beautiful subdivisions in this city. I live there and if that subdivision was not built, I would not live here and I would not be sitting here as a council member who are always pushing for fairness in everything that we do. When we voted the last time, one of the things that came up for the first time ever was this 100-foot setback that was a requirement of the flex zoning period. I don't think that that was fair to the developers, hearing that at the very first time that that was a requirement that was needed at that particular time. And I do believe in fairness and I appreciate the effort that the Schaefer's have made during this entire period of time. But my driving decision is the housing crisis in this country. That is a nonpartisan event. Last week, Donald Trump, our president, stated that he was going to declare an emergency housing crisis because there are not enough housing to accommodate those who live here, including in Farmington Hills. There are not a lot of open spaces in Farmington Hills. 98% of our, of our city is built up. There is no space. We're looking at trying to bring more housing for people who work here and at affordable points. It's not that affordable at every level. We're looking at the 12-mile corridor where there are empty office buildings along that 12-mile path, that we're considering doing some type of mixed-use development there to increase the housing in this area. I am concerned about people who want to live here and can't live here because there, there's no affordable housing or housing that is within the range of their income level. One of the things that I've, I've worked with are Michigan Municipal League, who is our, is one of our resource for council members. I'm working with the National League of Cities, who is the national body that helped cities and towns and villages across the country to cope with some of the things that are happening here and housing crisis is one of those. And I think it's important that for us, as a city, that we make some type of accommodation in our city to recognize the need for additional housing. Now, if the density is higher than we like, yes, where I live, the density was higher than what other people in the, surrounding that community. Like, there was someone from Wood Creek here and that community really, really pushed back on my development. But I'm glad that city council prevailed and here I am recognizing the fact that I love my community and I support this community and that my children or child was able to participate in all the great activities of this city. For those individuals who live in the Westgate subdivision, which is north of this particular project, I think that it's, there would be some differences, but everything that I've read and heard, because I've heard from lawyers for the subdivision, lawyers from the development, there's been so many legal documents that council have seen over the past week or two weeks or so that we've reviewed and for that reason, that's one of the reasons that I would like to reconsider this particular project. It does not mean that council is going to change its mind, but all the new information that's come to us, as well as the possibility that the density can be reduced in that development. Already on 13 Mile, it's in itself is a very high-traffic area. We all know that. I travel that all the time. Especially since the construction is on 12 Mile, it's probably more traffic there than has been there in the past. Some of that will dissipate, but every objection that I have heard so far when the Schaefer developers have talked about it, they've addressed that. They've addressed the traffic. They've addressed the engineering study. Everything except the density, I think, is something that I have not heard. And that's why I am willing to allow them the time. If they can reduce the density in that partic-, in that project, I would be very pleased. And that is the reason why I am voting tonight to be, for a reconsideration of that project. With the understanding, I'm very upset about some of the remarks that were made about some of my fellow council members. That was totally unnecessary. We live in a civil society. We should spec-, respect everyone regardless of our opinions or positions that we espouse. So it's important that we respect people, listen to people, give our reasoning why we vote or don't vote a certain way and people should respect that. If in the future, my deliberations are not favorable to this community, I'll be voted out. But I live on my own moral compass. I do what I think is best for this city. That was, is what I'm elected to do. I am not gonna please everybody. I'll please some people. So as long as I have a little bit on each side, I think that is very important for me.
Thank you. Mr. Aldrich and then Mr. Dwyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's, I think it's regrettable this whole process has been dragged out for so long. And I feel, I feel for residents who have to come out multiple times to, to say their views. I think it's, I think it's regrettable, some, the comments that were made this evening. And I, I, I regret that's how people chose to conduct themselves. As, as council members Noel and Boloway mentioned, I, I- As, as councilmembers Noel and Bolowar mentioned, I, I, I believe and I agree with them that council is genuinely looking at these things, looking to make the best decision and the right decision for the city. And, and as I mentioned, I would not have supported a motion to reconsider if it was exactly the same proposal. However, there were some significant changes and one of those being the setback, which I had made a considerable issue on the eleventh of August. So, for that reason, I was willing to reconsider this. And, and to be honest, I think it's regrettable that this wasn't more along the lines of what I was expecting this to be, which was the request for reconsideration, where we could then look at this in detail at a subsequent meeting. In other words, not have the fall out. We could just consider, do, is there enough here to look at this again and then come back to it? Would have been a less painful process all around. And I think it wasn't necessary to have quite the, the lecturing on city council's obligations. So this is a difficult one. However, I do believe that there was best-faith effort here from the developers to find a ways, is there a way to meet need? And I would agree that, given the hundred-foot setback, and I would also agree with reduction in density, I was open to hearing, what could we do? Is there a way to do this or not? And then to look at that in detail at another meeting, not this one. Because right now, we don't have a detailed plan. We don't have how it's going to look, right? We've got a water-filled balloon and we're squashing it in the middle. Well, what's going to pop out, right? What, what's this design going to look like once we've made this change? So, I am, I am willing to support a reconsideration. But that's absolutely not an indication that I'm going to vote yes. It depends what comes before council. And I'm, just regret the fact this has been such a long, drawn-out and somewhat insulting process.
Thank you. Mr. Dwyer.
Thank you, Mayor. If, if you recall at the last meeting, I voted yes for the development. And I gave several reasons why I voted yes. So obviously, I'm willing to vote for this to go forward, even when we have the hearing, not going to change. I think this is an excellent development for the community. I think the people deserve something like this. The, all the areas that were concerns of the city council and of the citizens, the residents, have been addressed. They've, they've all been addressed by the developers. This, you've got to look at the big picture, I think. I mean, I, I understand how you're feeling as far as the residents, but if you're sitting on the city council, I've been, I've been in the city for a long time. You've got to look at the entire city and what it means and what it's going to bring into this city. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so I appreciate the conciliatory nature of the Shafers coming forward and the way they requested the reconsideration. This vote that I'm about to call for is only a vote on will we reconsider the item? There would be a subsequent motion if it were to pass. If we do not have a majority in favor of a reconsideration, then the matter is closed. So I'm calling for the vote. This is a roll call vote. Councilmembers Dwyer?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Aldred?
Yes.
Bolowar?
Yes.
Bridges?
No.
Bruce?
Yes.
Mayor Rich? Yes. Okay, so we have passed that we will reconsider. Now, the applicant and owner have asked us to postpone resuming our discussion and deliberations. We could make a final decision tonight, but the applicant and owners have asked us to postpone our discussion until a later date. Would council like to consider that request at this time? Mr. Aldred?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I move to, to table postpone this item till first regular meeting of December, on December 8th.
Okay, there is a motion to postpone to our first meeting in December. What is the date of that, please? That would be December 8th. Okay, you, you did say it. I wasn't sure I'd heard that. Thank you. Okay, so there is a motion. Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Okay, there is a motion and support. Is there discussion on that motion to postpone to December 8th?
Just to comment why? Because I don't believe we can comment, we can vote on this proposal until we know what is being proposed. And therefore, we have to give time for them to come back with a, something that is of substance for a final, in my view, vote on this topic so we can move on.
Okay, Ms. Bolowar.
Ask the applicant a question. Since, you know, there's a, we're asking about a new, something on density. I know that you had mentioned, I, I read something that you're looking at another develop, another builder or whatever. So, I don't know if that's, I'm reading that correctly.
No, no. So, we're going to go back to the drawing board with a plan with revised density. What that plans look like is, is to be determined. This is a, a fairly recent development. We are under contract with Pulte Group. They're the third-largest national home builder and they will be developing the entire Mulberry Park side. So the twenty-eight townhouses and the, the twenty-four townhouses and the eight dupes. The other side is going to be owned and managed in perpetuity by Detroit Baptist Manor, who currently operates Baptist Manor.
Okay, so that gives you what? How many weeks would you need to come back with?
That is ultimately to be determined. I mean, once I submit plans, there's a month notice. So if I submit something in, in, in November, it won't be till December. We're not really looking to make wholesale changes to the road layout, but we do need some time to, you know, do some internal decision-making and decide what that number is on the density. So as to that, I, I can't give a confident timeframe.
Yeah, we can move it out.
I mean, I think December is perfectly adequate. That gives us ample time.
I think it'll take our engineer at least sixty days to start and prepare the plans that are going to be needed for submission. So I would say sometime late November would work out fairly well for us.
Okay. All right, so, yes, Jermaine.
Just to add a little bit of information as far as internal workings, once we have that document for review, it will take staff three weeks for the review to be processed.
So is the motion for December 8th a reasonable date or should it be?
I would prefer a little bit more time so that we're not rushing and having incomplete information.
Ken? Mr. Aldred?
I'm willing to amend it to January if that, if that means the city can accommodate that request.
First meeting in January?
Yes.
Ms. Bolowar, do you still second?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and support for the first meeting in January?
January 12th.
Which is January 12th. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Okay, I'm assuming that this is also a roll call vote?
Uh, it does not have to be a roll call vote. That's in your discretion, council's discretion.
You should.
It can be a, it can be a.
It can be regular.
Regular vote.
A regu?
It's up to you.
Let's do a roll call vote, please. All right. Councilmembers Aldred?
Yes.
Bolowar?
Yes.
Bridges?
No.
Bruce?
No.
Dwyer?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Mayor Rich? Yes. Okay, so this matter is done for this evening. We are moving on to item five, consideration of appointment to the Innovation, Energy and Environmental Sustainability Committee.
Thank you for the time this evening.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Continuing item five under new business? And we still have public comment and a stack of cards, folks. Item five.
Yeah, are you, you're asking?
I'm asking for a motion, please.
My computer, it's been sitting for so long. I gotta get it back on.
I can make a motion, Madam Mayor.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
I move the, the approval of the following appointment to the Innovation, Energy and Environmental Sustainability Committee, Dr. Robin Cash, for three years, term ending February the first, 2029.
Four. Okay, there's a motion and support. Any conversation, any discussion? Nope. This is a regular vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Carries. That then takes us to public comments. We have a stat. And just, we've got a few in a couple of different topic areas and one that doesn't have a topic name to it. So Angie Smith, would you like to go first, please? To be followed by Tracy Lee, Patricia Hansen, regarding caustic.
Good evening again. I want to thank our clerk, Carly, for all the work that she has done and the due diligence as a county clerk. This is not for the weak. I have been addressing phone calls this past week and weekend regarding an email that went out saying urgent that ballots went out. Absentee ballots. That is not true. So I had to defuse a few people from calling and wanting to say that our clerk was grossly not intelligent, which is not true. Those ballots don't drop until twenty, what, on, on September 25th. So I urge, when you put these emails out, be diligent, know your facts, make sure that everybody knows the dates because city council and our clerk had been under attack. I actually got six calls and then I got the calls today. And people are confused. And people want to know what's going on. And then behind that email was a request of sending funds. So they want to know what is that all about? So I let it be known ballots do not drop until September 25th. Again, thank you to the three of you. I am so sorry that you were under attack because you were not the only three that voted, no. So it seems like this was a attack on your candidate seat. And I felt a little of it too because my signs are out there. So at the end of the day, thank you. These positions are not for the weak, but continue to fight a good fight. This is not a, in my case, it's like a bunch of five-year-olds holding their breath and wanting what they want until you give in. So this is not a dictatorship. This is a governance. And you have governed this community very well, all three of you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Tracy Lee to be followed by Patricia Hansen.
Good evening, Mayor. Good, good evening, City Council. I just have a few questions regarding the caustic center. I'd heard that it was, you guys were going to move the activities from there to, to the Hawk. And so I'm here on behalf of Word of Faith Christian Center Church. We're interested in purchasing the caustic center and would like to know what will it take for you to consider selling it now, leasing it back until you can move out, making sure that you intend to sell it? And if not, what are you going to do with it? And we also saw that there's, I drove by there, saw that there's construction, trying to find out what is that construction and how many acres have been sold or are being considered for sale? So five questions. Are you looking at selling the caustic center? Because my client would like to purchase it.
So Ms. Lee, in public comment, it's the opportunity for the public to address council. It is not a discussion. And so I'm sure that someone from the city manager's office can talk with you.
Sure. I went to the city manager's office and I was told to come to the city council meeting. So that's why I'm here.
Okay.
Apologize, apologize for that. Karen Mandoroff, Assistant City Manager, would be happy to get your contact information. We'd be happy to have a discussion with you.
Excellent.
Apologies for the confusion.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Patricia Hansen to be followed by Johnson Yang.
Good evening, Mayor Rich and councilmembers. Man, am I fortunate to sit through the second meeting of all that property. Last time I left, this time I'm not. I would like to thank the councilmembers that took time to respond to my last two emails I had sent out. The topic of my email is the caustic center. At the June 23rd meeting, it was promised to the community that you would work hard over the summer to come to a conclusion regarding the caustic center. And you have not done so yet. And now we're running into the November election, which was exactly what was said two and a half years ago, that you did not want to happen. You have not come up with a location, a design or a funding. So obviously, summer is over and nothing has been resolved. Majority of the councilmembers that responded to me believe the property in front of the caustic center would be the best location for a new building and that seniors need their own place. Unfortunately, the city manager is not on the same page. At the Commission of Aging meeting recently, the city manager stated he is looking at a building, a new gym and a pool on the Hawk property. There is no mention of a kitchen. Does this mean Mills on Wheels will be contracted out? Dine and Discover will no longer exist and all the other themed lunches and special events? Will there be safe parking for the seniors? And how will the seniors register in the gym? Will they have to go to the Hawk front main desk, register for the activities in the gym, walk through the Hawk to the new gym and the new pool? And how many wheelchairs fit into the elevator? If an emergency occurred and you needed to evacuate the building, how would the seniors be evacuated from the third floor? How would, I already said that about that. We are well into the election season and these questions have not been addressed. While we understand that it will take time to get the project up and running, it is time for the board to set some reasonable parameters for a new caustic center. I heard someone say that it's been seventeen months is the longest they've had a project. Let's try two and a half years for the caustic center. You have listened, you have heard, you have the consultants report over and over and over again. They have said nothing new of what the seniors want, what the seniors need. And how much are you spending on consultants? The seniors of this community need their own place. They need a place they can be safe where they can walk safely and we're not being run over or be intimidated by the younger generation that have a tendency to do that. I think this council really needs to get your act together and give the seniors an answer on what you choose to do. Because you're, you're giving them two different answers. You know, we're going to build a place by the Hawk. No, we're going to give the caustic center in front of the building. We need an answer. And you're going to have your consultants again on the 22nd to tell you what. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Johnson Yang to be followed by Teresa Weiss. Oh, okay, thank you. Ms. Weiss? To be followed by Manvith. Sorry, I can't read it. Okay. Then to be followed by Robert Weiss.
It's actually Wiss, but that's okay.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
And, and Mr. Wiss, I have two cards for you. Are there?
Yes, my husband, husband and my son.
There we go. There we go.
Good evening, Teresa Wiss, as you just heard. And I live on Randall Street, adjacent to the DeAngelo's debacle that we find ourselves in. And I know you all got my emails plenty of times, and I'm not through yet. Because today we had 140 M-80 type bangs. We had 60 in 15 minutes. We are senior citizens, I have to tell you. I'm here tonight because I want you all, I don't know who's in this meeting on Friday with DeAngelo's, but please reiterate to these people that we cannot live like this. I wake up at 6:30 in the morning to a loud M-80 bang. 10 o'clock at night this past week, M-80 bang. This is insane and it's inhumane. I don't know about you, but you know what? I'll offer my home to any one of you for a month. Live in my home, let me go in your home. You wouldn't last one 24-hour period. I retired two, well, it's going to be two years in June next year. I've had two years of this nonsense. And I'm telling you, I had a whole script here. I'm not reading it. Because my God tells me that all of you will do the right thing. And you know, and I want to apologize for what happened to you today here. I had nothing to do with any of this. But my God, my Lord and my God, that was horrific. And nobody should have to go through that. And I apologize for whoever did that. And I, please, help us. Help us with these M-80 bangs, these dust-ups that are going on. Our full acre is from the top to the back. My husband has a garden. He has to wear noise-canceling headphones. He still feels it because the bangs are coming from the ground. They want to build this wall. Someone approved them to do some kind of screen? I don't know what that's supposed to do. They have mounds of dirt that are 30 feet high almost in the air. When the wind comes, it's like snow in our yard. My husband has COPD. He can't breathe. We can't walk out our back door. And one other thing I want to ask. They got this violation. But can someone explain to me what light industrial is? Because they have 20-ton excavators that they are operating. They have 40-yard dump trucks that they're, I mean, it's like an avalanche. I don't know what that means, but this is heavy equipment. This is not light industrial. I know my time's up, but please, one more thing. I'm going to take my husband's time. I'm sorry. But I have to say that we need peace. We need quiet. I want DeAngelo's to flourish. I want the company to make lots of money. So big that they have to move out of our next door a lot, okay? We need peace and quiet. Thank you. And I forgot, I was going to thank everyone that has taken an active stance. And there's a lot of you that have reached out to us, so I really thank you and thank you for your time. And God bless you all.
Robert Wiss.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I know it's been a long night and it's been very interesting, but I'm just going to read this on behalf of my father. He lives there as well, on Randall, adjacent to the DeAngelo building. He has COPD, so he gets a little winded when he speaks. So I'll just read what he wrote real quickly. He said, "I would like to say good evening, but I can't. When a longtime resident of Farmington Hills has to come to the city council begging them to enforce the zoning laws for a light industrial zone. My dad and grandfather," this is him speaking, "built the house in the 1930s where they live, the first house on Randall. I was raised with six sisters and four brothers, my parents being good Catholics. My dad always said, 'No one gets out of here alive,' so when they both died, I bought the house from the estate. My wife wasn't thrilled about it, but we moved in 1993. She must have known that DeAngelo's was going to move in 30 years later, forever ruining our peaceful and quiet existence. For 30 years, it was nice. I had a fenced-in 30-by-80 garden for growing my vegetables. And it was a form of relaxation to me, tending to my garden. And now in order to go outside, I have to wear ear protection and the dust masks. I have been caught in several cement dust-ups where you couldn't even see your neighbor's house. Not good for someone with COPD. Now maybe on Sundays, I can go outside without ear protection where I don't hear the heart-stopping bangs of the tailgates and 20-to-40-yard dump trucks, the dropping of metal pipes on cement, or the constant beeping from heavy equipment backing up or horns from semis blowing. A couple of years ago, they went to a funeral in Lapeer. I was with them, actually. We noticed a lot of companies that looked like DeAngelo's, but they were all in very kind of rural areas, you know, like not neighboring residential. I mean, they're literally, these people are arguing about 100-foot buffer zone for a residential thing. They don't have 100 inches from a semi truck, you know? It's just, and if I can, he just also asked, please, please to help us to resolve, not mitigate, since no one is above the law. And please enforce according to your zoning code. Hopefully, we'll do the right thing. So the seniors here have a right to peace and quiet on the south side of Farmington Hills. And that was my father's time. And I guess if I could just have mine as well. I've been watching their health decline. I mean, I don't want to be dramatic and, you know, all this. It's just, it's been very hard for the last three years watching what they're going through. It is, the bangs, I mean, it's insane. Like if you came over there, just come over, hang out for a day without telling DeAngelo's you're coming, it is cra, it sounds like a war zone, like you would think you're in the middle of a war zone. And like she said, 100 and some odd bangs today. I mean, boom, boom, and that's in your house, you know? If you're outside, I mean, I, we heard eight while I picked them up today. And enough to make me jump. I'm a lot younger than them, but you know, it's still hot. And on top of that, the dust-up. They have giant piles, you know, nearly as high as the ceiling here. And when the wind blows, completely blacks out the yard with dust. It looks like, you know, you're in the middle of the dust bowl. So I know that's, you know, just being that close to a residential neighborhood, I can't imagine that that could be considered light industrial. And I'm just really praying for a resolution for my family that we've been on that property, my family for 90 years almost. We don't want to go anywhere. We can't go anywhere because no one will buy their house because it's constant, six days a week, you know, 12, 14 hours a day of really startling sounds. Like it's nothing, you know, you could, anyone could live next to. So I really appreciate you guys. I know it's been a super-long night and, you know, we kind of, we had some other neighbors here with us, but they had kids and things that needed to get to bed. So I appreciate you guys listening to me and all you do. And again, I'll reiterate again, that was really horrible, the attacks. I don't know any of you personally. I don't know your politics. I don't know, you know, who sides with DeAngelo's. If anybody knows them here, is friends with them, please help us out. We're, I know we're just, you know, citizens, but we've been here a long time and we don't want to go. And, you know, we don't want to escalate this any further. We just need some help. So appreciate you. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager? I, they mentioned that there's a meeting on Friday?
Yes.
Do you share with council a little, please?
Who's going to be there? When is it?
So, so, yeah, the DeAngelo representatives are coming with their attorneys to meet with our planning and zoning staff to have a discussion about this situation. Wiss, Mr. and Mrs. Wiss, I, we're doing everything that we can.
No, we understand that.
We're really working hard to address the issues and.
I mean, I shake every day, and I'm a calm woman. I'm not a crazy hysterical lady. My emails may say different, but it's driving me crazy. The beeping, the beeping, it all has to stop. They don't, I don't believe they belong there. I mean, they don't have, it says in the ordinance that they have to be 300 feet from the zone of residential. They're only, they're only 200 feet wide. They don't have 300 feet. Or a thoroughfare has to be there. I don't know why this was approved in the first place, sir. I don't know. They bought it in 2021. They started with, they have a 10-to-12-inch reinforced cement on that acre. They full well knew they were going to have heavy industrial equipment on that. They did. Because who puts 12 inches of cement reinforced if they're not planning on doing this heavy industrial? Craziness.
I mean, I'm sorry.
It's okay, man. I, you know, I, I very much sympathize with you. I am a civil engineer. I know exactly what you're hearing. And, you know, tailgate slamming on dump trucks, even on the construction sites. If you're not aware, if you're not aware, if you're not ready for it, it's startling, to say the least. It's very loud. And again, we're doing everything we can within the structure of the law and our zoning ordinance to do the best we can to address these measures. And I just appreciate your patience. I know, I know it's, it's been a long road, but we're trying to get some relief for you.
Mr. Bridges?
I thank you and I appreciate everyone.
Are you going to be prepared at that meeting to discuss mitigating mitigation efforts?
That's part of it. That's part of it. But, you know, our attorneys will be there. Their attorneys are going to be there because this is a zoning issue.
Yeah, I just want, I know you know this, but we got to exercise the full authority of the city protecting the residents. And I know we have some grandfather issues here, but I would, I know you're going to do your best to make sure we mitigate this issue for the resident. This is uncalled for, this type of noise like this. But I appreciate the fact you're going to be prepared to discuss mitigation efforts as well. Thank you.
We look forward to your update. There's one more public comment.
Yep, please update us on the city manager update so we know what's gone on with, after the meeting.
Is there any way I can sit in on that meeting?
I'd like to say no, but no, that's not a possibility.
I mean, I just thought.
Let us, let us do our work. Let us, let us do what we, let us do what we can here, okay? And it's.
Will you be getting back with me with the details?
Either somebody, either myself or somebody from my staff will be back in touch.
Because we need complete transparency. I need to know. One other thing, August 2, they were putting that so-called screen up. There was 156 M-80 sounding bangs that day. Had my husband and I known, we would have rented a hotel. We would never have stayed in our home. So let us know if they're going to be doing that kind of activity. I mean, it's insane to me and it's inhumane.
Well, it's hard for us to know what they're doing.
So we do have one more public comment. So can maybe the two of you take that in the hall? The conversation in the hall so that we can respect Mr. Matijin's time since he's been here all night?
Yep.
Would you like to come up, please?
I'm sorry. But I could stay here all night. I got lots to say. No, I'm kidding. Thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jaf Metan. I live on 30249 Chaiwos Road, not too far from here. I want to just come and address a noise complaint that's been going on. We had the road reworked and it's been a really wonderful road. Some of the drivers, and there's people that live in this subdivision that have nice performance cars, they've started taking more leeway of how fast and how much they accelerate the cars. And some of them don't have exhaust on them. And so there's been a very unpleasant amount of cars that, you can hear because there's no exhaust, you know exactly when they're on the accelerator. And some of them will actually accelerate, lift off, accelerate, lift off, because you get the pops and bangs. And there's also these mini bikes. They cut off their exhausts. So vehicles are one thing, but there's also a lot of cars with subwoofers. And there's some that my windows will rattle. And so I did send an email to, I think, the city manager, and I did get a chance to talk to Lieutenant Kurt. I don't know his last name, but the police. The problem that I have is the police have to see the violation before they can ticket it. And I don't have enough time on my hand. They passed by in a minute. So I don't know what else I can do, but it's a very unpleasant situation.
We could talk to you about that in the hallway as well.
Thank you.
All righty. City, thank you for coming. City Attorney Report?
Yes, thank you. I have nothing to add or change in my report as it stands. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next meeting is going to be the 22nd, special meeting beginning at 3 o'clock. Good night, Farmington Hills.